Okay, good evening, everybody. And welcome to the last board meeting to close out 2022. And we're going to open, a call to order to open the public meeting at 7:00 PM December 13th. And Alana, if you could please call the roll.
Member Conley?
Here.
Member Olonechak?
Here.
Member Sherniglia?
Here.
Member Jogi?
Here.
Member Scapulato?
Here.
Thank you, Lana. Now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We will begin this evening with a public hearing on the 2022 tax levy. And Stacy, if you could help us go through that?
Yes, the information on the proposed tax levy was presented at the last meeting at the Board of Education. The information and presentation's been on our website since that time. Notice was published in the paper regarding the public hearing tonight. In the public section of the Board docs includes the presentation, the proposed levy, the resolution, and the cash balances by fund.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone here? Yep. Do we have any public comments on the levy?
Decrease the extracurricular activities, decrease expenses, decrease the property taxes, vote for a 0% tax increase. In a previous meeting, you noted that the number of school district 25 families in the property category is increasing. Give us a break. Do not greedily increase property tax to the maximum just because you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Okay, we'll move on to board communication. Oh, yeah. Do? Yep. Do we have anybody else for the levy hearing? Yes, sorry. Thanks for coming.
I didn't see anything, so it'd be nice if you could put it up on the board, number one. But what is the levy for next year that is proposed? Because it was 3.70, I think, for 2021. I just got the tax bill, and that's why I'm asking. Because when I got all of the information regarding the vote, it was, we were touting that we were one of the lowest tax rates, which was like 3.43, and now it's 3.70. And I got my tax bill, went up, gee, what a surprise. 54% of the increase was directly related to District 24. So I'm just, maybe you can put it up so we can at least see what the thing is. My comment is, whatever I say right now isn't going to matter because I think you've already been in the other room and have already decided what you're going to do, so.
Okay, thank you for that comment.
You're welcome.
Any other comments for that portion?
So you're not going to put it up on?
As Stacy had indicated, that it's been posted?
It's been posted. I understand it. But we're here at the meeting.
Yep.
Can we just see it up here on the board? We've got a board meeting. Put it up on the screen. It's simple, without a quest.
Dr. Biden, is that, are we able to do that? Adam said? If I pull up a document from there. Stacy, can you show them which one? Thank you, Adam. And so you all know, this was also covered in detail at the last board meeting. So if you pull up the meetings, they'll also be in there, so for your information purposes. Thanks, Stacy and Adam. So we'll give you a couple minutes to look over that. Yeah, actually, Adam, can you scroll down a little bit so I can see the headings? No, the other way, so I can see the top of that slide. Thank you. So the 2022 tender levy, the projected actual extension, the 21 actual, thank you. For the 2022 projected actual extension.
That's the L?
Yes.
So that's over 4. What do you think about this, greater than last year? Actual?
2.7%.
It's 5.7%. It's based on CPI plus new property.
Otherwise, we're over 4, right?
It's about 3.8.
And, I mean, this might get to a question I'll have later on, though. How much of it is, how much of that 5.7 is including the repayment of the bonds?
So the bond and interest levy is separate. It's always separate. It's not part of tax gap funds.
So then we're maxing out at 5?
For the bond levy is already set in stone.
Right.
So we are asking for an increase over last year excluding the bonds of 5.7.
Okay.
That includes 5% tax gap and new growth.
Correct.
Now that the visual is up, any other questions about the tax levy portion of the meeting? Any comments? Okay, thank you. We will now close the public hearing on the 2022 tax levy and move on to, do I need a motion? I don't believe so. We will move on to board communications and board member updates. I have, there's been many exciting updates, but I will let my colleagues chime in first. Greg, would you like to?
Yeah, Madam President, yeah, I just, I have a couple real quick. And, you know, this month, I always enjoy sharing some of the things I've seen around the district, but we're going to talk later about our IASB presentation. And I'd like to tie a couple of my observations in being around the district back to our strategic plan. So I want to tell you all about a concert and an art show, but I'm going to tie it to that family and community goal, specifically the strategy that mentions we want to develop effective partnerships with our community agencies, higher education, and District 214. And that last bit is the important part. So on December 1st, I was able to catch the concert at Thomas Middle School with the jazz bands, the choir, and then the Hershey Top Jazz Band was there. And then a couple days later, on December 3rd, there was the art show held at the Forest View.
Forest View.
Thank you. Educational Center, which was an art show featuring all the D-214 schools and all their sender schools. And in both of these situations, these are events that, they're not new, but that they are now rejuvenated, now that we're moving past COVID. And they're worth highlighting because they exemplify this partnership that we want with our District 214. You know, they celebrated the creativity and talents of our District 25 students, and they connected those students, whether it was the jazz and choir students or in the art show, connected them to the possibilities that are open to them when they go up to the high school and get to see that stuff in really concrete ways, when they see the top jazz band performing, or they walk around and see all the different media that the high school students are creating. So I just thought that those were exemplary examples of that partnership. And though they're not new, we want to honor them and keep those going. The other thing I'd like to share, and I know that we'll hear more about this at a future meeting, but on December 4th, the Arlington All-Stars Basketball Skills Event happened with, for our Special Olympics athletes. And just a congratulation to all the All-Stars, the joy that these athletes expressed and their, I would say, indomitable spirit. It was, it's just so inspiring to watch them. But let me connect it back again to our strategic plan, and I want to point out our vision, where it mentions we want to be promoting learner competence, courage, growth mindset, and well-being. And I think these All-Stars, again, were shining examples of our strategic plan in action. So, thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Yeah, though definitely, I feel like if we needed any hope or ray of sunshine, attending those, the Special Olympics and the Art Fair, both of them were truly remarkable and motivating and inspiring. And just to see our Special Olympics students, our All-Stars, the joy and the jumping up and down when they got the medals, it was really something. I actually took my fourth grader with me, and it was a highlight for his day as well. So thank you, Dr. Biden, for, and to the district for organizing these events, and the fact that it's on the board calendar really helps us get out to these events and to see our phenomenal art teachers as well who displayed the work. Moving on to Ed Redd. Rich, do we have any updates with that? And Stacy?
Thank you. Just wanted to remind everyone that, actually, I have a couple things, but I want to remind everyone that we have, where the Ed Redd is having their annual dinner in January. So if you have nothing to do on a, I think it's a Monday night, if I recall, feel free to join us for dinner there. There's two other things that I wanted to chat on, was one, just an opportunity for, once again, for another agenda item to automatically be added to our docket here by the state of Illinois. So earlier this year, the governor signed the Decennial Committee on Local Government Efficiency Act. Yeah, that's really abundantly clear on what that means. But what it basically says is all units of government must form a committee to review local efficiencies and report recommendations regarding efficiencies and increased accountability. Now, we're exempt because we're technically not a unit of government, though we have the ability to levy. However, in their infinite wisdom, they did act, or did pass an amendment to that in section, or to the school code in 171-1, that requires each school district to formally approve the annual State Board of Education report regarding improving fiscal efficiency through shared services or outsourcing in Open Meeting Act. So we're going to have to have an agenda to talk about what the IASB did in terms of meeting this law, in terms of what their, what efficiencies that they're gaining in that particular piece. So just, I know everyone, Chad is extremely excited about that topic. But one that's a little bit more interesting, because it hasn't really come up as much, but one of the things that Ed Redd has talked about is, or we've talked about is the voucher program, right, or what can be seen as the voucher program. And technically, in Illinois, we don't have a voucher program. What we have is two programs. They're, one of them is called Invest in Kids. And the other is just, what we all have the right, is the tax credits for educational expenses. So if you're looking, if you're trying to say, well, how do I utilize services within the state of Illinois, you know, outside, or maybe, you know, as a way to do further education or into a non-public education area, the two methods are Invest in Kids program or the tax credits. Now, why I'm talking about that is Invest in Kids was passed in 2017 as a temporary area, and it's due to expire, or not to be renewed. It was renewed for one year, and it's due to expire. And during the lame duck session that we have right now, it's set to be coming up for discussion, review, for appropriate view. I know Ed Redd, in general, in their documents, says that they're not supportive of this, but wanted to maybe just add some numbers and clarity to this, just so we, as everyone understands and everyone can make their own decisions. So first off, it's not a voucher program. So it's really a tax credit program. It's passed by Public Act 100-0465. And what it basically does is allows individuals to donate money to a specialized scholarship-granting organization, which would then offer scholarships to, into qualified schools, right, in new relief for the student to go to that particular school. So it's both businesses and individuals can donate money into those particular organizations. In the state of Illinois, per an annual basis, it's a $75 million total tax credit. Okay? So again, it doesn't impact the funds that are coming to us, it doesn't impact our property taxes, it's just over the general income of the state of Illinois. Now, it's separated into four districts, so we have a Cook County district, imagine that. You have then a Northern Illinois, you have a Central, and then you have a Southern Illinois. In terms of how much of that $75 million can be placed there. For Cook County, that's, there's a cap of only $38.5 million of tax credit that can be gained in that area. So if more people want to go in for that particular tax credit than 38.5, too bad. You can't have that particular money. It's not eligible to everyone, right? It's only, the main eligibility is income. So you get 100% if you're at about 50%, I'm sorry, 150% of the federal poverty level. So, and then it caps out at 250% to 300%. So really, if you're a family of four, you're earning $50,000 or less, you can qualify your kids if you go down that route for 100%. Or if you go up, if you're around $70,000, you don't get any. Now, it's not a full 100% reimbursement on the tax credit, it's 75%. So if you donate $1,000, you're going to get a tax credit of $750. Now, so all those are just interesting numbers, and I found it interesting researching some of this. But again, in Illinois, you have two ways to get tax credits for educational purposes. First is a tax credit for educational expenses, which, believe it or not, 215,000 taxpayers utilize, right? 215,000 taxpayers utilize at the average of $24. They get a credit of $24. Okay? So, good job there. What's interesting, in the entire state of Illinois, so out of those four districts, right, the number of students that are now participating in the Invest in Kids program as of 2020, sorry, 2021, was 7,642, okay? Or the total student population in Illinois that is eligible for this is 1.9 million, and there are 7,642 kids that are utilizing this right now. And it's for elementary, high school, or vocational. So if you want to do, you know, tool and die, great, you know, that's an area that you can get tax credits for. What's interesting is that the average amount that's utilized, or the average amount is 7,132 of that particular amount that they earn as tax credits, and only 44 point, I'm sorry, 42%, right, that's what it says, I might, I think, yes, I should, I said that. So that 7,642 represents 42% of the eligible population that fall into that eligibility. So, you know, me doing a quick math, of the amount of investment or the amount of push that's talked about for Invest in the Kids program, of the 1.9 million kids that are in the school system, only 14,000 are eligible for this program. Which is interesting, you know, of why are we so necessarily maybe against this program or against voucher? But again, it's not vouchering, it's providing a tax credit to send your kids through an alternative program. I look at it as just more facts, more, you know, so depending on whichever way you fall on this, it's an interesting program. It provides a means for a set number of individuals based on maybe where they live or what's surrounding them or where they are. So just fun facts, more of what's available out there if we just knew about it. So, all right, thank you.
No, thank you, Rich. I saw the Ed Redd Executive Director had recommended a book based on this information that you shared. I'm not sure if you recollect what it is, but I'll bring it up at the next board meeting and kind of skim through it myself. So thank you for that information, and I will be at the Ed Redd Dinner, so I'm looking forward to it. That doesn't mean I don't have anything to do that evening, so I will be there. Moving on to IASB, it was definitely, I know our board truly appreciates attending IASB. There's a lot of learning. And this time, District 25 was, you know, was invited to actually share our strategic plan, so we're really excited about this. And I'll brag a little bit. At some point, I think our district presentation had standing room only, like, we were really well-attended, and they found it really interesting. And a lot of hard work went into this presentation, and I want to thank Adam Harris for all the, like, people were really, lots of questions about our branding and the way we presented all the material that we did. And Dr. K, you know, with his, all the information that he provided, Dr. Biden, our whole board's input into this. And so that was really neat for us to be there. And for the IASB presentation, and I'm sure Greg will jump in in a second as well, we started to talk about our strategic plan. We began with why we lead with purpose, you know, what is it, why we do have a strategic plan, and why we believe in this process, and our why behind the whole process. And then we went on to talk about the process of, the whole strategic planning process, right? It took many months to go through this, and there was stakeholder engagement from the community at large, and we continue to have reports on it like we did earlier this, last week, right? My weeks are now blending. So we continue the process for the planning piece, but now living the plan. So we're actually, lots of work that goes into living the plan. And board members, if you didn't get to see the great posters that were put together for that presentation, Dr. K actually brought them, so they're at the back wall, so you'll get to look through them as well. But it was, it was really great, not only for us to present and dive deeper ourselves as board members into the strategic plan, but also kind of hear feedback from other districts. And there were districts from across the state of Illinois who were at the conference. And so lots of interest in our strategic plan, lots of questions, and it was good to kind of have a good discussion around this. Greg, I'm not sure if you had anything else to add?
Yeah, I'll just, thank you, you captured it. And so I think what I'll add here is just, for me, the best part of the process was that, you know, taking that close look at the strategic plan and then drawing those, intentionally making the connections between the words on this paper and then what we see every month here and what we discuss on our agendas, and make, connecting those dots. And it was really, it was powerful then to share that with those individuals that came to hear us, you know, each half hour. So I'm really grateful for the opportunity to do it, and I'll just echo what you said is, thank you to Adam for helping us create amazing visuals, and Dr. K for really being like, you know, he just pulled together all the information we needed on the district side of things so that we could come in and then have discussions between the three of us about how best to present this for the members at the convention. So, thank you.
And to our board, we're looking forward to put, if anybody's interested in putting in a proposal to present at the next IASB conference in November, let me know by the end of December. What we learned from this kind of process of putting in a proposal for a conference, it does take quite a bit of time by the time it rolls out. So let me know by the end of December. It'd be great for the district to present again with our administrators and kind of show off our district. So we're kind of gearing up to present again at the conference. So it'd be great to have you guys, all of us, be there again. So thank you for that. And then as far as IASB, the conference itself, I want to invite my board members, if there's anything that jumped out at this, from the sessions that you attended, if you would like to chime in, this would be a great time to chime in with that. But I do, I'll start off, and then I'll, if anybody else wants to chime in, a couple things. There were excellent keynote speakers, and everything ties in. When we go in for the learning, we as a board tie everything into our strategic plan. And so for the public to know, we're living our strategic plan to the point that every time we're at a board meeting, it's in front of us, kind of laminated, thank you for folks who laminated this for us. So all the sessions we attend, we're really looking at how can we live our strategic plan, and what sessions can we go that helps us be better board members, right? So lots of learning goes in. And one of the keynote speakers was Amanda Ripley. She was amazing. So folks, if you're interested in this education arena, definitely look into her book. And board members, we will be starting a book club. IASB is inviting us to participate. I'll be there, and anybody else who would like to participate. The book is called High Conflict: Why We Get Trapped and How We Get Out. And it was just a really excellent book about, to continue to, on this journey of effective governance, which is so important to each one of us. So the keynote speakers at the conference were amazing. I personally attended a full-day workshop and training for board, being board president, and attended sessions on board and superintendent relationships, and why that is so important for our students at the end of the day to have that strong collaboration and conversations on governance and leadership and accountability. So all really very interesting sessions. So if there's, I have more IASB news, but if anybody else would like to jump in, this is a good time to chime in.
Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
I'll just share, it's tough to capture, you know, I mean, these are our sessions that we go to, and how do we capture that in a few words? So I'll just highlight two that were meaningful for me. One session I went to was a panel discussion talking about what board members should know about multilingual learners. And the takeaway I'll share here is particularly relevant to what we do at this table, is they talked about indicators of success. And the few that I'll mention are, they talk about, though they're important, test scores are not enough. That qualitative data really gives a full picture of how a program is working and the benefits for our multilingual learners. And then also to go beyond exit criteria. So once students leave the program, which is a success, but then how do we support them beyond that and make sure that they are successful beyond the program? The other session I went to, absolutely excellent speaker, Ty Bennett, the session was called Partnership Is the New Leadership. It's also the title of his book, so you can search for it on Amazon, highly recommend. But just talk, he went through a lot of different things about partner leaders and how they build genuine relationships, generate buy-in, and that even though motivation is important, partner leaders know that that's important, but it's not everything. So you might have motivated staff, but if you don't remove obstacles, that motivation really can't go anywhere. So removing obstacles is just as important as motivation. So those were the two I'd highlight.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks a lot, Greg. Another big portion that happens at the, this conference, you know, that we attend the weekend before Thanksgiving, and folks sometimes have travel plans, but board members cancel travel plans to be there, so it's, a lot goes into this conference, is the IASB resolution happens. And I was the delegate for our board, and so our board made some recommendations, and so I was able to cast those, you know, those kind of recommendations at the, as the IASB delegate. So that happened on Saturday morning as well. So that was done on the board's behalf. Other than that, for IASB, nothing else. We can move on from there unless anybody else wants to chime in. Okay. Moving on to NSSCO, and Gina isn't here, but she sent us a report. Dr. Biden, could you read through that? Sure. I am so sorry. It was for ABC 25. So that's not happening right now, so hold on to that thought, okay? But both Scott and Gina weren't able to be here today as far as NSSCO, so we'll hear from them when they're able to come back to the board meeting next, in January. Right now, the next portion we have is community input. Do we have any community input, Lana? Okay. And I am going to kind of just go over some guidelines, but I want to remind the community and folks that are present, remember, there are many ways to get in touch with the board. You know, we're always available via email, so email board@sd25.org. You could attend the board meeting, you could email our staff. If it's operationally related, our staff will take care of them, take care of that issue. So from your teacher, principal, you know, go up the chain of command to Dr. Biden, and then definitely, we're here as a board, and we always respond to any emails that are sent to us. So, and of course, speaking at the public board meeting is something we welcome as well. The input is really important to us. And so I'd like to say that the opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a comment to make about the business of the board. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. As the board strives to make the best decisions for the district, public input can be helpful. In order for the board to reserve sufficient time to conduct its business... In order for the board to reserve sufficient time to conduct its business and to operate its meeting in the spirit of civility and decorum, speakers are expected to follow the following guidelines. Number one, address the board only at the time provided on the agenda and only after being recognized by the board president. And number two, identify yourself and be brief. Your comments must be limited to a maximum of three minutes. The board may shorten this allowed time in order to conserve time to allow the maximum number of people the opportunity to speak. And number three, please be respectful and courteous like we've had always, and the board requests that you not make statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. The board typically does not respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during the public comment period, but we do listen intently and appreciate the input from our community. So the first comment we have is from William Boudreau.
Last time I was here on September, I think 13th, to discuss what had happened as far as a referendum. Well, at that time, we didn't have our tax bills in, so my taxes went up 54%, I think I told you, specifically to School District 25. It's now 37% of my total property taxes. 37% is probably for everybody. So I'm waiting for the triple whammy coming next year. One, general inflation. Two, the bond, 5.7%. And then my reassessment. I got reassessed for over 25%. So based on the $300 for $400, my $10,000 increase over the next 20 years is probably going to be more, about $12,000. And that was at the initial part. So I didn't, I wasn't able to stay for the whole thing. I'm not going to be able to stay for the whole thing today, but I do get the opportunity to watch it. And one of the interesting things was that afterwards, I finally got a chance to determine how many kindergartners we have. Well, the presentation said on the sixth day, 411. That's a 60 decrease in students in kindergarten. Yeah, we're going to build 25 classrooms. And when I looked at it, you're going to put four at Dryden, expand the gym. This was all stuff that wasn't available, available, or I didn't see at the time. And I'm thinking to myself, in 2011, after you had the first expansion, we had massive rain and it flooded, not only on Dryden, but also on Roosevelt, my street, which is two streets away. It was like we had Lake Superior and Lake Michigan on those two streets. We're going to have the same issue, we're going to have a bigger issue if you put four more things in. And the question that I have is, do we really need this in light of the fact that there are now only 411 kindergartners? In fact, your total enrollment has gone down since 2018. So we have a lot less students than we had five years ago. So, and it's only going to go down because nobody's buying homes right now because these young people who are the ones who are probably going to have families who are going to be in single-family homes, they're not going to be able to afford to live in Arlington Heights, particularly if taxes go up, interest rates go up, and real wages go down. So I don't think that this is something that we should go down the path for. I think you still have an opportunity to revise everything. And just looking at the numbers that I saw, about 46 cents on the dollar is going into interest. So if you, if you would have told people that we're going to spend $86 million, and of that $86 million, we're going to build 25 classrooms, which based on the presentation that I saw, 15% you're not even going to use as classrooms. So it's like having a three-bedroom house or a four-bedroom house, putting on a spare bedroom and remodeling, and then saying, oh, I'm not going to use it because it doesn't matter. You keep looking at the clock. Yes, you do. You do, ma'am. And you really need to revise. And seriously, if you don't reconsider, you shouldn't be doing the 15 million three years from now. You probably shouldn't be doing the 60 million now. You probably shouldn't be building the 25 classrooms. You should probably reconsider everything and really use common sense. And I want to be civil, but the five people who voted in favor of this resolution to go forward probably should resign.
Thank you. Next, we have Sam Papas.
Good evening. My name is Sam Papas. I emailed to all the board members a copy of this presentation, but I'm actually here to restate it. Regarding internet access generally, it was recently reported that pornography was accessed on D25-supplied laptops using internet applications selected and utilized by D25. I asked Dr. Bynne to conclude a thorough investigation and audit of D25's internet filtering software to confirm whether it is functioning properly and whether it is adequate for its intended purpose. She indicated that she would look into it and respond. Our committee, the Arlington Heights Curriculum Review and Selection Committee, would like the board to thoroughly examine this issue and take appropriate action to ensure that this type of problem does not happen again. Regarding parental restrictions on student access to reading material, various books that have been the subject of parental objections, concerns are located in school libraries throughout D25, including Westgate's LMC, and/or are available online to D25 students. A young adult label currently utilized in middle schools does not achieve our objective of protecting children from inappropriate contact at all D25 schools. As I've mentioned to Dr. Bynne and the board on numerous occasions, we need a more comprehensive mechanism for parents to want, that want to restrict access to certain reading material by their own children, not generally. This is not an attempt to ban books generally because we disagree with their content, nor an attempt to impose someone's norms or morality onto others. This proposal is an intra-family type restriction with the help of technology provided by D25. This proposal would be in addition to and not in substitution of D25's book objection policies and procedures that are currently in effect. Any controversial reading material could still be accessed by students whose parents have not restricted their child's access to it, or that has not been removed by D25 for any reason. Our Curriculum Review and Selection Committee would like the board to examine this proposal, which is quite narrow in scope. It's intra-family, and take appropriate action to have it implemented as soon as possible. And one last comment, I really think, you know, we talk about this strategic plan, but IAR scores are in the 40s, and that's, in my opinion, I think is a failure. Illinois Assessment of Readiness at 40%. There are schools that are out there in the 50th, 60th, 70th percentile, 80th, and 90th, and we're 40% failing while our consultants are patting us on the back for incremental improvement. This has to change and it should improve, and this is what you should really be focusing on as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Melissa.
Melissa Kier speaking. The students are going to get angry when they find out the adults have been paying for an education that is shortchanging them. And I paid my property tax on December 5th, and the money was withdrawn on December 6th. When will the School District 25 get the money?
Okay, thanks for the question, Melissa.
All right, and math teachers, let the village of Arlington Heights know what you think about their 0% tax levy increase.
Okay, thank you for your input.
My name is Roger Berg, and I think you recognize me. I've been here before. My comments tonight are pertaining mainly to the Global Service Program that a board member and our superintendent attended. Towards the end, I had heard that some of the service projects you wanted to complete, you weren't able to do. You had inadequate tools, and you had lack of supplies. Now perhaps that's that culture's way, but you were going there to perform a service. I trust everyone that went there wanted to do the best that they could, and the refusal of the organization to accept your willingness to purchase, give them to complete your project is beyond comprehension. But nonetheless, that is their right. I do hope you contacted IASA and told them how disappointed you were with that. Your service was limited by an organization that wouldn't let you do it. Now going on, you were in the Dominican Republic for seven days, and it was all made possible through grants by businesses through the IASA. And I quote, "Through amazing generosity of foundation partners, each participant selected for the service project will only be responsible to pay $500 in order to attend." Part of the business who rely on education tax dollars. These are businesses that are actively going to boards, superintendents, and other institutions for tax dollars. For seven days, that included, I believe, travel, lodging, food, accommodations, and tours. The fair market value of that is many thousands of dollars. Did School District 25 and other superintendents and board members pay only $500 for this service project? Representatives of the amazing partners were there too. What a great opportunity to meet one-on-one with decision-makers. Superintendents and board members who determine where millions of dollars are spent. This district alone has a referendum with $75 million. And you were meeting on a Caribbean island. Will you go for your personal vacation or what you do is strictly your business? But is it appropriate when you accept travel, food, accommodation, and tours worth potentially thousands of dollars because of your employment status or your elected position?
Thank you so much, Roger. Your time is up. Thank you for your input.
Sorry?
Your time is up, sir. Thank you for your input, your three minutes for your comments today. Thank you. Okay, we will now move on to communications from district partners. So now is the time, Dr. Bynne, after we, oh, we don't, PTA is not here today, as they're wrapping up the year of all their hard work. But I do want to say that the end-of-the-year activities that PTAs across our town and across our district are doing have been so meaningful. I was able to attend the Dryden PTA family get-together, community get-together at the MT Corner here in Arlington Heights. And it was just so neat to meet so many new families who kind of moved into the area and new parents, and get to kind of share about, you know, what's happening and how happy they are with the district and so forth. So it was really neat event, and I want to thank the Dryden PTA for putting that event together. And I know these events are happening across the district, so they totally deserve the break that is coming up, all the PTA volunteers. And ABC 25 Foundation, we have a report from Gina.
Thank you. Gina sent me her reports. She was unable to be here tonight for ABC 25. Congratulations to all of the grant recipients. We look forward to your creativity and innovation in teaching our students. The ABC 25 Foundation now shifts to fundraising. They have partnered with Nothing Bund Cakes in Ranhurst, and for the rest of the month of December, they donate 20% of purchases to the foundation if you bring in the coupon that can be found on their website. New this year, the ABC 25 Foundation invites your family to our first-member benefit event, a hands-on forensic science STEM escape by mobile ed. It's on Monday, January 16th. That is a non-attendance day in the district. You can sign up for one of four 45-minute sessions. It will be held at Ivy Hill Elementary. It is free for ABC 25 member households. $10 per participant for non-member family households. Details, you will solve a mystery with science in a crime-scene science environment. Come take a look at how your students can put on their thinking caps and solve the Great Cat Caper through logic, reasoning, and some cool science. This event is appropriate for school-aged children, kindergarten through eighth grade. See the website for more information and how to sign up. So I'm sure information will be communicated out more to our families. Again, that's for Monday, January 16th. There's 45-minute sessions and four different slots that you can sign up for. If your family's a member of ABC 25, that is free to any members of your family.
Okay, so ABC 25, so Bund Cakes and Mystery Problem Solving. Okay, excellent. Thanks to the foundation for all their work this year as well. And next, we have ATA with Allison Burke.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to take a moment to highlight some of the awesome things going on around the district before I shine the spotlight on Patton Tonight with their five best things. So at South, eighth-grade science is participating in an international science experiment called Exolab 10. The students are trying to create the tallest alfalfa, designing their own experiments. Students from 12 different countries are participating, and they're also watching the Mother Experiment currently on the ISS. The goal of this project is to learn more about successfully growing food in space as well as in harsh conditions on Earth. At Windsor School, NSSCO partnered with Windsor to provide students with an ability awareness day. Students had the opportunity to travel from station to station to experience what it would be like to have different abilities. Students learned sign language, learned what it might be like to have a visual, physical, and tactile impairment, what it might be like to speak another language, or have a learning impairment, among other simulations. The NSSCO staff led each station and provided background information to all the students, led students through each simulation, and then provided time to reflect and discuss. I have some pictures from that day. It was super awesome. We had done this actually years ago prior to COVID, and it was back this year, and it's an awesome experience for the kids. You can see their faces, having a really good time and learning at the same time. And these are the tactile stations. They wore mitts to do things like buckle and tie shoes and button shirts. Students learned what it might be like to be in a wheelchair. And so it was an awesome experience for our students. Also at Windsor School, our fourth and fifth graders just participated in the Noetic Math Challenge Contest. So the Noetic Math Learning Math, the Noetic Learning Math Contest is a semi-annual problem-solving contest for elementary and middle school students. The goal of this contest is to develop students' problem-solving skills to encourage their interest in math, to inspire them to excel in math. During this contest, students have 45 minutes to solve 20 creative problems independently without a calculator. In fourth grade, the grade-level winner was Will G. from my class. There he is. Okay, moving on. Now you know I chose to share this. Students in fourth grade who earned a place on the national honor roll were Will, Easton, Jonathan, and students in fourth grade who earned an honorable mention were Cecilia, Colette, Connor, Eleanor, Jacob, James, Joshua, Katerina, Mac, Marcus, Nathan, and Uika. In fifth grade, the grade-level winners were Dia from Ms. Pinsky's class and Teddy from Ms. Liebrock's class. Students in fifth grade who earned honorable mention were Dia, Teddy, Claudio, Ella, Nathan, and Tyler. Congrats to all of our students. There's a picture of some of our other winners, and there they all are. Those are our fourth graders and our fifth graders. Congratulations to all who chose to participate. It's a super fun event. We've been doing it at Windsor for many years. And there's our fifth grade, other fifth grade winners. Okay. At Dryden, students participated in the Cardboard Challenge. Creativity is the most important skill of the future, and the Cardboard Challenge is a powerful tool to foster it through playful learning. Kids can build whatever they can imagine with cardboard and upcycled materials. See if you can spot Dr. Bynne joining in on some of the fun. I spy with my little eye. Yes, and a magical machine, looks like a vending machine over there, pretty cool. And some other inventions by the students over at Dryden. Super fun. All right, so without further ado, I'm going to move on to Patton's top five. So shining the spotlight on Patton today, Patton has dedicated staff, caring teachers, administrators, and supportive staff because it takes a village. it takes a village to run a successful school. Patton has a supportive parent community and PTA. Patton has amazingly wonderful students. This year, Patton has a motivational student-and-staff-centered school-wide theme called LOL, and they have a bulletin board where students and teachers can contribute to that, to that school-wide theme. And then the top, the number five, one of the greatest things about Patton are all of Patton's musicians. Jazz Hands and Grapevines are in full swing at Patton this year. All grade levels will once again be hitting the stage to perform for Patton's students, staff, and families. Fifth-grade students are thrilled to announce that this year's annual musical will be Walt Disney's Moana. At the end of November, fifth graders gave Patton students, staff, and parents a sneak peek of what's to come by performing "We Know the Way" and "You're Welcome" from the show. In addition, Patton's second-grade performers have been working so hard for their grade-level performance this Thursday, December 16th. Second graders will be performing Cold Snap, a show that highlights and celebrates different traditions and family celebrations during the holidays. And there you can see the Patton Panthers in their performance. So as you can see, Patton has much to be proud of. I'm always pleased to report about all the great things going on in District 25. Have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Allison. Today, we're really, favorite part for our board is the student recognitions part, and we didn't have any students, you know, today because they're so busy with everything that's going on for them for the end of the school year. So it was so great to tie that in and bring in the picture, so thank you so much. And we will now be going on for the approval of the consent agenda, and I need a motion, please.
Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items on the consent agenda as follows: A, personnel report, an addendum to personnel report; B, invoices; C, treasures report; D, special closed session meeting minutes of November 7, 2022; E, regular and closed session meeting minutes of November 15, 2022.
Thank you so much. I need a second. Thank you, Rich. Lana, please note the vote.
Member Olonechak?
Yes.
Member Sherniglia?
Yes.
Member Jogi?
Yes.
Member Scapalato?
Yes.
Member Conley?
Yes.
Thank you, Lana. We'll now move on to, I need a motion for the adoption of the 2022 tax levy.
Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
Sorry about that. I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution of Arlington Heights School District 25, Cook County, Illinois, providing for the levy of taxes for the year 2022.
Thank you. I need a second. Thank you, Brian. And this item, Stacy? Thank you for helping us go through it.
Okay, there are no changes to the proposed tax levy that was presented on, at the last board meeting in November. So all of the information you have is included in board docs, including the resolution, the summary of cash balances by fund, the presentation from last week, and the proposed levy, as mentioned previously this meeting.
Thank you so much, Stacy. And all that is accessible to our whole community as well, correct?
Correct. The presentation has been available on the website, both on the district website and through board docs since the last meeting, and all of the documents the board has is available to the public as well.
Okay, thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments?
Madam President?
Yes, Rich.
Quick question. Stacy, just to help me know, I'm offering the question earlier, but if you could just help me connect the dots on this. So earlier this year, you had proposed, or given us a tentative budget for next year, the same year that the tax levy would be incorporated in. And at that point, as I'm reading this again, I mean, you're trying to help. Yeah, but it's 2.18% of an increase excluding capital projects, funds, and bond and interest, right? So what I'm, what I'm trying to understand is you're requesting a 6.7% levy increase over a budget increase of 2.18%. So I'm trying to understand how to connect the dots between the two and what is our actual need versus a projection.
Right, so you did present that question earlier. So again, as you mentioned, the 2.18% is our operating funds increase. However, we do use tax levy dollars that we levy in the operations and maintenance fund to transfer to cover our capital projects. So those are below that 2.1% increase. Our capital projects is actually $9.2 million on top of the expenditure budget, of which we are transferring $4.95 million from the operations and maintenance fund, which comes from property taxes.
So just clarifying then, how much of the bond, or I'm sorry, the bond is going to be how much going into next year's budget?
Out of the 9.2 million, we are paying $4.95 out of property taxes from operating funds. The difference will come out of the bond proceeds based on the reimbursement resolution the board approved back in August or September.
So on top of it, what you're saying is on top of the 2.1%, if we added, if I'm tracking, it's the 4.5 million? So what'd that bring?
Right, and if you look at the revenue side, the revenues are about a half a million dollars less if you exclude the bond proceeds, because the bond proceeds are for future projects. So on the revenue side, the budget is, in operating funds, is $143.5 million, but if you take the 60 million out, it's about $83.5 million, which is already short of what we're spending on, in operating expenditures, by a half a million. On top of that, we're taking another $4.95 million out of those revenues to pay for capital projects. That is what we've been doing for the last couple of years, is transferring a portion of property taxes to help cover our capital project costs, so that is the difference in terms of what we use those tax dollars for. If we had absolutely no capital projects to pay for, or had another source of revenue to pay for them, it would be a different story, but...
This goes back to, you know, maybe, I'm going to sound like a broken record, is, you know, what, how do we cover our capital costs now, which are going to be in four years, right? We don't have a plan, because the bond payment was going to cover five years of capital costs. And now what happens in four years when we run out of that additional funding? We don't have a plan for that, so that's going to be an interesting dilemma.
So when you, you'll see the projection coming up later tonight. We'll bring the five-year forecast in January. We are working on that. You'll see that, well, you'll see that we're working on a plan to continue to shift those tax dollars to cover capital funds, to move that target out beyond the next five years.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Stacy? Seeing none, Lana, could you please call the vote?
Member Sherniglia?
Yes.
Member Jogi?
Yes.
Member Scapalato?
Yes.
Member Conley?
No.
Member Olonechak?
No.
Okay, thank you. The motion carries three, two. Thank you. We will now, we will now go to facilities management with Ryan Schultz.
Good evening. Tonight, I'll be presenting the five-year Facilities Master Plan, which contains our projects that we consider capital projects. These are usually one-year, one-time improvement products that'll extend the useful life of a item that's in our buildings, or do a drastic improvement to an item to make it last even longer than we would anticipate. So first thing I want to go through was the, kind of the priorities that we put for the planning of these. Our main ones that we're focused on are safety mandatory, preserving the school grounds, extending the life of the schools grounds. And I put a new one this year that I think is really important as well, is if there's a strategic goal of the district that we need to be looking at, that we're focusing on that as well, if there's a curriculum change, things like that. Again, I could probably move that around on where that would be prioritized, but again, I did want to put that in there in case things do come up. Improving efficiency, again, for HVAC, electrical, building envelope, other things included in the district. And then our last one that we would focus on is enhancements, and that is just things that would aesthetically improve the facility, the learning environments, and things like that. Again, we're really trying to maintain our facilities, kind of as an as-is status, right? So we don't want to do these drastic, huge, new and bright, shiny new things. We're looking to really keep our buildings in a shape that they were intended to be with newer finishes and updating HVAC systems and that as they come along and as are needed. The first portion, again, just a highlight of some of the slides, a little bit different this year, similar items that I'm showing, but just want to show it in a little bit different format, since we do have a number of items that we're intending to complete in the next several years with the referendum scope. So again, just highlighting some of the projects that are included in the plan and the years on when right now we're intending to implement those plans. Again, from this first chart, you'll notice a lot of them are intended to be completed in 2024. That is to align with the additions and completing them in that summer, just before the kindergarten referendum additions are completed in 2024. So you'll notice that in this plan, that a lot of them are aligned with 2024. In addition to that, products beyond that, we're looking to make efficient and trying to scope some of those products together that may be blended together across multiple buildings, or working at one certain building in the future. So beyond that into '26 and '27, we're looking to leverage that as well, once we're completed with the big kindergarten addition scope. Some highlights on this first page would be district level. We're looking to improve the door security and hardware for the classrooms, so we're looking to do some improvements on that with door hardware. We're also looking to upgrade the building automation system at each of the buildings. Again, this is a software-related issue that we're at the end of the useful life. We have no longer security support on the system, so we do need to make that upgrade here in the next year or so. As well as Dryden, we're also looking to do a bunch of these projects at Dryden that are coming due in the near future and blending them together with the addition project for economy of scale and efficiency. The bigger portions of that one are air handler replacements that were put in the mid-'90s, roofing replacements or retrofits on the roofs. Most likely, the gym portion is a larger section. We'll need a new roof because the new gym roof will be tying into it, and it'll get a lot of use and abuse through the construction process as well. So we're anticipating that will be a full replacement, and it's needed at the facility as well. Flooring replacement throughout the corridors is the primary driver at this facility, and we're also looking at doing a playground replacement at this facility as well, since we're nearing the use, end of the useful life. At the other facilities, there are general items that are lifecycle replacements based on condition and age of the item. So again, I placed them in the years that I believe are most efficient for us to hit with the addition projects, and then also extending them out into '27 at this point. Going to the next schools, our South Middle School. Again, this building was built in 1997, so in the term of the lifecycle of a building, we're kind of at that point where items are still recurring and need to be replaced. We've gotten ahead of some of them with some of the classroom flooring and boiler improvements over the years, but still there's extensive flooring that's needing to be replaced in the corridors, that's failing from UV damage from the sun shining in, so the floor is no longer adhering to the concrete, so we need to replace that. The east parking lot, we were intending to do this last year. We're still working through some stormwater detention items with that facility. So again, that's the east parking lot, the drop-off and drive aisle that we're looking to replace. And then in future years, a big product that will be needing to do there is unit ventilator replacements, and those are the air handlers in each of the classrooms. So again, South has a number of items that still need to be addressed, and we're looking to get those implemented in the next couple of years. The major one in out of all our buildings here on this list is Westgate. That is the one that we've been looking at for a number of years now, and we're looking to get going here in the near future. Those are primarily driven by galvanized piping replacements, again, to the classrooms, air handler replacements, roofing sections, flooring, painting, lighting, a wide variety of items that we're looking to get going at Westgate. So we're intending to get the Westgate scope going, the renovation scope going this spring. We're looking to do the north half this next summer, holding off on the rest of the building into the summer of '24, when the renovation addition starts to attach to the building. Then we'll focus on the southern half that following summer. So we are looking to get going and looking to propose to bring bids forward for the Westgate renovation scope, again, separate from the addition scope at this time, but the renovation scope for the north half of the Westgate building sometime this coming spring. Again, the remainder of the buildings are Dunton, Minor, and Rand. Those, we're really looking at core infrastructure improvement projects that we need to maintain the building, again, related to galvanized piping, HVAC improvements, window replacements, unit ventilators, masonry, fire alarm system. So really, the core items that are needed for those three facilities that we consider like our ancillary buildings for the district. Going into the high-level projection of the five-year plan, we're projecting $34.3 million in five years in costs. This contains the '22 through '26 costs that we're projecting right now to be covered, as we discussed, out of the referendum bond proceeds. The following year of '27 begins the, I would call the sixth year of that, so then that's when we'll be talking further about future funding and how that can be worked into the budget going forward. Increased spending again in '24 is highly related to the coordination with the additions and the renovation projects, so that's why there's a large spike in '24. We're holding off on some of those projects that may have been done in '22, '23, and maybe a year or two after, so we're trying to get those together in '24 to make that efficient, and then following behind in '25 with some lighter scope that can be done at other facilities that aren't being impacted, and some of the buildings may have a smaller work that's going to be done at those facilities as well in '25 and beyond. We just want to be cautious, again, with the amount of work that'd be going on at a facility in one year, so we're not overburdening the school, and supply chain issues are still things. So I think we're going to be blending this together in a manner that would be manageable as well, so we're looking to make that work out, that we're not going to be overburdening a certain school with the amount of work that we're just not able to get things done. So that's why we're spreading the capital out a little bit further on some of these items into '25, '26, and '27. And then again, I just want to point out, these capital costs obviously do not cover the kindergarten expansion costs. Those are separate. We'll kind of split that up through the referendum process, and we will be providing some updated budgets in that in the future, as we, we're pretty close now with our designs and that that are going over to the Village. So we'll be providing more updates on that portion of the budget that we're looking at going forward. And again, we will not know those final numbers until actual bids are open, but again, we're getting closer now to having a better estimate that we can review for that. This is just a breakdown by trade and then by building. The trade, again, I put special project plumbing, that one looks excessively big, but that does contain most of the Westgate scope in general. It's driven by plumbing, so I put that into that category, but that also contains the lighting, the ceilings, and things that are associated with it. It's just easier for tracking to lump some of these together, that they're going to be run as one project, so that's why that one looks excessively big. And once you start going into the other fields, they're more standard things, so an HVAC project is just a standard core HVAC project, roofing, et cetera, along the chart, just to kind of the breakdown of the trades. And then buildings, again, are driven by Westgate. That is our largest spend that we'll be seeing in the next five years, as we anticipated, to support the renovations that will be going on in the building, followed by Dryden, which again, has a number of things that we're looking to get done for the building for energy efficiency improvements and flooring. And then also Ivy Hill will be falling back on some restroom items that were not taken care of in the renovations that were done several years ago, so that's why Ivy will be in there as well. So again, just a high-level look at where the spend will be done across a trade and a building-related. The next slide is one that I put in several years ago. I updated it last year. Again, just as a reference, the blue bar are the projected five-year spend that I just showed on the chart before. The red bar is just kind of a benchmark. This would be, again, taking all our assets, dividing them out by the lifecycle of their assets, and coming up with a benchmark number. Again, this would be, I would say, a best-in-class number that we'd be looking to spend if we were spending the 6.5. I don't believe that's realistic. I think we are still closer to the $5 million that we've been discussing for a number of years now. So again, just using that as a benchmark, if we were to distribute capital funds evenly in a perfect world, and we'd spend the proper amount every year, and it'd be even every year, it would come out to be about $6.5 million. So again, our plan obviously fluxes a little bit year to year, but again, the year-over-average, we're looking to be at about 6.5 would be the perfect go-to. Again, we're, right now, we're shooting more towards the $5 million a year budget. We think that's more feasible to be down, looking at that number. Exploratory options, again, this is a slide that we usually contain just items that we're looking at. I did want to point out, the items in the bottom were on the past exploratory option slides in years past. Those are the ones that we're actually looking, that we're intending to implement now going forward with the capital plan improvement, and think that we can implement them in the next couple of years with these projects. That was kind of the thought process on that. So again, the two items that we're still exploring are flexible earning spaces upgrades. We're continuously looking on that on furniture and what that looks like for the classrooms. So we'll be looking into that as well for the classrooms that we're building with the kindergarten additions, if there's anything that needs to be incorporated for that, that's low-cost or no-cost types of items that just make the classroom layout better. And then the other one is front office reconfigurations for access security. This is one thing that we've been looking at more and more, is how people get into the front offices. We will be piloting a little bit different setup in the Dryden office as we reconfigure it, so it'll make it a little bit more secure and a little bit easier to access the office for people on a daily basis. So we're looking at that as our first pilot, and then we'll determine if that is something we propose going forward down the road. So again, those are just exploratory options. The items that we're in progress, we're kind of designing or intending to implement into the future, again, as we talked about, we had full-day kindergarten on there at the time, so we are looking to implement that. Air conditioning, the remaining gyms, which is Greenbrier and Westgate. Westgate will actually just be getting a new gym is what we're proposing, and Greenbrier will be air conditioning as part of these scopes at work. Classroom door hardware upgrades, again, I'm proposing that we do implement those in the next two years, so we'll be looking to... Classroom door hardware upgrades, again, I'm proposing that we do implement those in the next two years, so we'll be looking to upgrade the hardware. LED lighting upgrades will be again, in the several years, we'll be looking to implement those with the additions and then also going back to our existing buildings and leveraging LED lighting in the classrooms and spaces that remain. And then the building automation system upgrades were a thing that we're, we were still working through last year, we have a pretty clear path now that we need to be doing these upgrades this coming year to make sure that we're compliant with the current security standards that are required for that system. With that, that is all I have on the actual items. I did want to go through some just general items on our estimated new construction replacement costs, these are just, this was from last year. So I probably won't update this again until we get the additions done and things like that. This is just to give us a ballpark on what each building's kind of worth and what it would cost to build a new facility if we would ever go that route. Again, just as a benchmark, no other need for this slide. And then again, our favorite topic right now is construction cost trends. This is a yearly production that is done showing construction cost trends across the industry. Again, not specific to schools, but just general trends, taking into account labor, supplies, productivity, things like that in the system. And as we have expected, we're at about 8.59%, we're estimating to be at this year. Would expect to see that start coming down next year sometime, hopefully. So we're looking into that and making sure that we're budgeting appropriately and planning on our projects appropriately, based on some of these things that come up with the cost trends. With that, I will open this up to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions, comments from colleagues?
Madam President.
Yes, Rich.
Ryan, can you go to slide seven?
Yes.
So to summarize the two questions, so I know you talked about that you're trying to focus in the costs during a lot of the, a lot of the work. And so just from a timing perspective, I noticed that 2024, and if I believe right, that's when kindergarten is supposed to open up in 2024. So is that 10 million, the bulk of it, going to be used really the spring and summer of 2024? Or, and is that going to mingle in with everything else, or is that just too chaotic?
Yeah, no, again, we're looking to get that done in the summer of 24, that's when the majority of the work will be done. We'll open up the schools, we'll tear them apart and get them back together in that summer of 24. So again, it is intended to be started once school lets out and be completed by the fall of that year. There may be some that, again, are lighter scope that we might do at a winter break or thing like that, but the core of that is going to be done in the summer of 24.
So then, you know, the number that we've been talking about, or you know, that's been bantered about here, you're showing at 6.5 or 4.7, right? And you're talking about the number would be five. So I guess the question back to Stacy in a future budget, you know, would be good to see is, how do we pay for that five on a in revenue basis without using up our reserves? Because right now, we're pulling from reserves to pay for that capital as well, right?
Yeah, we're budgeting to cover it through reserves for the most part, and then depending how the year falls out, we use some current revenues and we use some reduction in reserves, correct?
So I think from a board perspective, we need to make sure that we either understand that reserves will continue to be depleted, because if the benchmark is four, I'm sorry, the benchmark is five, and we can't cover that out of incoming revenue. You know, it's either we're going to have to go to bonds again, which, you know, we're going to be paying these off for the next 20 years or so. Or we got to come up with a way to maintain the buildings within the means that we have, which is what we come in with our normal budget without going down on reserves. So something, more conversations to have.
Madam President.
Yes, Greg.
Just a question, a couple of questions and comments, Ryan. So basically on slides three and four, nothing, we'll start there. First, I want to say, you know, seeing these presentations for a couple of years now and even looking back, I appreciate how they have evolved, like on these, adding that schedule of what years you anticipate doing these projects. And lends a lot of clarity, and then even you included, and I think you've done this before, but adding like, these were completed in 2021, 2022. So that retrospective view for stuff that's been completed. Just as I wanted to ask for future presentations, you know, if feasible and if it makes sense. If it would be possible to provide estimated operating savings attributable to these capital projects? And I understand, as I'm asking, that these would be ballparks and estimates, but I think that's important for context as we look at spending on these projects. What does that mean when you replace a boiler or other upgrades? And maybe every project doesn't necessarily, but where appropriate, I think that would be great information for us. The other thing I think I would appreciate is that even on this, again, if appropriate, the cost of those items. I want to acknowledge you had that summary for each school and that's clear, but I think even in here, that might be great information for us as we look at those projects. And then finally, I'll just add that, and I would say this about most, any presentation we say, see here, and like, just parenthetically say, like, we've had challenges because of COVID, looking at testing, because testing has changed. But anytime we can get context of what's happened before, because, you know, we do have to look at where we're going, but what's happened before over the last two, three, four years? Maybe in some of those larger graphs you had, I know I would appreciate that, just for context.
Just to clarify, you're looking more for just the spend, past spend and what projects were completed further, like?
Yeah, so like here, like slide, like the slide seven. You know, like if you, if they were, again, just for context and again, if appropriate or reasonable, yeah, so.
And just one question, just one comment on the question you had or comment. We will be proposing the next year's numbers, specific numbers at the next meeting or near future. So we will be showing the numbers specifically for the ones that we're going to propose. We may bring the next two years in numbers for budgeting, just because we have to start designing them and blending them for budgeting. So just on approval on that, we may bring 23 and 24, but we will make that clear in the next meeting. We typically bring one year, but just with the amount of work that will be coming up, we may bring more than one year of projects and the estimated budget coming forward at the next meeting during, in the near future.
Yeah, well, so thank you for considering those ideas and again, you're always great about packing information into these slides, so thank you for all you do.
Madam President.
Yes, Rich.
Ryan, I'm going to tag off of what, where I thought Greg was going with this, but on this particular slide, and I think you've done this before, is especially when coming up with, you know, where we're projecting on the spend, is what was the spend before? So here, you know, we're starting at 2023, but I think you have graphs or, you know, the anticipated and the actual going back some ways. And again, that's where I thought Greg was going, just, it might be helpful just to see what that trend is.
Yeah, that's easy enough to put in there, I guess.
Thank you for those questions. And Ryan, thanks for the presentation and ties in, like, again, when you said, everything we discuss and do is for the students in the district. And this one, of course, tied back to our strategic plan, right, of stewardship of resources goal, that's very specific. So thanks for helping us address the time, space and aging facilities. And now you're going to go and talk about construction update, and I'm almost like visualizing like, like, what do you call, like a countdown to 2024? Like, I feel like we're seeing a clock, I'm seeing a clock in my head.
Yeah, so we will be talking about deconstruction and counting down here. Great. Are we, good? Thank you. So the next portion I'll be talking about is the construction and the items that we'll be addressing with the kindergarten expansions. I first wanted to go through just kind of the general outline of what we'll be talking about through the slides, kind of giving a general overview of the timeline, floor plans, rendering and additional considerations that we have throughout these projects. The first slide kind of goes over our current schedule that we have with the Village of Arlington Knights and tentative meeting dates. So the schedule again is put together with the planning department based on the meetings that we've had already, neighborhood meetings, conceptual design review, design commission, plan commission. I think I'm covering them all, the village board meeting, the first one, and then the second one, that'll only have the final approval when they would adopt the ordinance and the resolutions associated with the full approval. So we have been able to get a number of them on the schedule, we're working through a number of the other ones that still need to be scheduled with the TBDs. The next one that we have is tomorrow night for the conceptual design review that we're considering phase two. Phase two, where it's just Patton, Greenbrier and Windsor, these projects are again, probably going to be starting a little bit later than the first three. Phase one, we're considering Dryden, Olive and Westgate, primarily driven by the size of the project or the scope that's necessary for them. So that's why we did just break them up for phases, again, for our architects and engineers to focus, and then also for the village to be able to review them as well. So we're well into the review process at this point, have a number of the dates set in the calendar. Again, this is fluid based on when we're submitting items and when the village has the capacity to review some of these items. But we have been working through that and feel that we're on a good path right now to seek approvals. Overall, we believe that all these approvals will be done by April of 23. So by that time, we'll be looking to go out to bid real, either slightly before that or near that time for the phase one projects. And then the phase two projects will probably fall behind a month or two in late spring, early summer for the phase two projects. The next slide kind of outlines that a little bit more, outlining when the Village of Arlington Knights approvals are intended to be done by, by April. The phase one bidding again would be starting in mid March, we're anticipating, and hopefully by mid May that we're opening bids. And then we bringing recommendations forward for the phase one bidding, again, for Dryden, Olive and Westgate. Phase two bidding would start not far behind that in later spring. And then the one anomaly that we'd be looking to consider is moving Patton up in the schedule because of the amount of stormwater work that would be going on there and just the addition scope. So that may be one that we break ground in the fall and try to get some things going in the fall of 23. Whereas, and then it would fall through all the way up until August 24, whereas Greenbrier and Windsor, we believe at this time, we would be waiting till the spring of 24 to start the construction on those. Because again, there are two classrooms, smaller scope for those additions, single story addition type scope. So again, just a little bit more information on the bottom there regarding the general outline and timelines that we're anticipating. Again, once we get through a little bit further into probably January and February with the village review, to make sure that we're on all those schedules and there's no major hiccups in that approval process. We'll be locking in the bidding process even more, publishing the bids and going out to formal bid at that time. Generally, the floor plans are generally pretty much the same as the last time I presented them, just these are the most updated ones that are in with the village for review. So again, these are the ones we're using for the village review for neighborhood meetings, and again, these are formally submitted to the village at this point, so they are fairly locked in. Dryden, again, with the four classrooms and the gym expansion, Greenbrier with two classrooms, Olive with four classrooms, again, on the west side of the building. Patton with the three classrooms in the corridor and a couple of ancillary spaces as well. Westgate with the net 10 increase in classrooms, if you count them, there's 11, because we're making up one that will be offset by the new corridor location and restrooms. So one of the classrooms is going to be slid into the gym, the existing gym and be built out into that space. So again, it is a net increase of 10 classrooms that we've been talking about. And then the Windsor expansion again is the two classrooms. The impact there will be to the two existing kindergarten classrooms where the corridor will need to go through that space to connect the building and kind of again, give us the flow that we were intending for the facility. These are some renderings, these are the preliminary renderings for the facility. Again, there's some minor details that are still being worked through in the renderings, but just to give you a general scope. The Dryden addition is, if my laser can get over there, this portion, so again, the main entrance is here. The Dryden addition is primarily this portion of the building. And then again, from this view, it's pretty much all the massing that you see would be new construction for Dryden. Greenbrier, the addition is this section here, it again, is built to mirror the existing section to the right side of the image. Again, the newer addition that was completed several years ago is in the back here, and that's where the addition will connect. But again, the new section with the two classrooms will be primarily here on the south side of the facility. Olive, again, the addition is primarily on the west side of the facility, near Arlington Knights Road with the four classroom additions on this end. Again, the rendering shows it from a different view, looking from the northwest, looking back down towards the southeast for Arlington Knights. Again, this is, don't trust all the grading that you see, it's a lot different than that, that was just used for diagrammatic purposes and showing. There's some sidewalks and things that connect up to the building, but it is considerably lower than the Arlington Knights Road area and things like that. So if you go past there and see the playground, that's pretty much floor level, the concrete where the, is for the playground area, that's pretty much where the floor level will be for that addition scope. The Patton addition is this section here in the middle, where the classrooms will be constructed for a one story addition at the time. We are intending to make the roof deck sustainable for a second story addition in the future. So again, just the joist spacing will be closer, it'll be a little bit heavier roof deck. We're not intending at this point to do the concrete or anything like that for the topping slab, but it will be sufficient to do that if it would need it to. Then the second story addition will go across the top and it would connect the second story here, and a new staircase would go in at this location at that point, if that were to go forward for Patton. In the, again, in the long term future. Westgate, again, this is the addition location on the backside, the west side of the facility. The existing gym sits right here, so this, we're looking to add the classroom spaces, a little bit of a canopy to break up the space in the new windows for the Westgate. This is the new mass for the new gym, that is again, going to be placed on the site, as well as the new classroom addition wing that'll be on the southwest corner of the site, connecting with the existing facility here on the southern end of the facility. And again, just another view lower, looking from the northwest, looking to the southeast, from the other location, looking back at the building. And finally, Windsor is the final addition with the two classrooms. Again, the addition that was put on several years ago ends approximately right here, so the new section that will be connecting the building back is in this location. The windows that you see here are for the corridor, connecting corridor, so the classrooms actually sit on the backside. We are intending to build them on the courtyard side so that it's easier to construct for the time being. And in the future, if we need to add more classrooms to that facility, they can be constructed on this side near Windsor Street. And it's easier to construct on the outside of the building, that we're not going to be landlocked inside of the building. So that is the intent with the layout for that facility. Again, those are the renderings, again, those are pretty far along, again, not the final, obviously detailed plans. But again, just to give you a massing and the general finishes that are going to be associated with the project. Again, at this point, they're just working through final details on what everything, how it all comes together for the facility. But again, we're intending the colors, the stone, the materials, the brick, kind of that to all be similar across all our facilities. In addition to complementing things that each of these facilities has and brings to the architectural table. Some additional considerations that have been coming up are just to want to point out for these projects. One that has come up recently that we're exploring is the potential gym expansion at Patton. This is primarily driven by the possible need for additional hours of PE spaces, space across the district. In particular, the size of Patton's enrollment and the size of their existing gym. So just to be clear, the gym at this time is everything on this side of the blue dash line is only one station. So they're not able to run two sections of PE in their current gym, it's too small for that, it would not be able to be divided up and support two classrooms. So we're exploring the potential of adding a gym expansion onto the extending out. So it's a little bit different than what we'd normally done. The only reason it's a little bit different is it's approximately the same square footage of our other facilities, but this one's just getting a little bit longer. So our intent would be to put a dividing curtain in this location, some new storage, office space and exterior storage. These two over here are actually just exterior wall space, so again, that's for the transformer for the facility and trash enclosure. So these two are not actually rooms that would be added onto the building. So our intent would be to go forward with some more additional design and if we would need that thing, that added on to the facility. We believe that the stormwater that we're already designing would accomplish that and that we'd bring that forward as an alternate bid at the time of opening, so that that final decision can come forward. So there's a number of things that need to go, be explored yet, right, PE hours and all those types of educational types of things need to be explored. But just an option that we need, we believe we need to consider at this time, we'll be potentially looking at the gym space at Patton. I did give a rough order of magnitude cost, I believe it'd be in the 2.5 to $3 million range. Again, that's when we're going to look at our estimates more and see if there's room for that within the estimates or where we go down the road with priority over capital projects or things like that. So I just want to point that out, that we are exploring that and it's primarily driven by the potential increase in PE hours.
If I can jump in there, what Ryan is referencing is, our district has always had a PE waiver given by the state. So that at the elementary level, our students go to physical education twice a week. And then we have, you can consider that teachers take their classes outside or do some extra interaction, physical activity with kids to meet that requirement of the state. That waiver has gone away. And so it is our understanding, and as you know, we'll do our statewide audit of District 25 this spring. It is our understanding that we are, after that audit, going to be required to have three periods of PE a week for all elementary school students. And that they are going to likely require that of us starting with the fall of 2024. So all of our other facilities have the space to add a third official PE period at the elementary school, except Patton.
The next area that we are considering, again, not included in any budget or that at this point, we just wanted to start exploring that, is the solar portion. Again, we thought that this was the opportune time to start looking at it and starting some preliminary assessments and then what that would contain. So we had a consultant take a look at some, through our engineer, take a look at some feasibility of this. So again, we had them look at Dryden in particular, we felt that that was the addition that most likely would support a solar project the best, because of all the addition on the south end of the building. And there's really no trees or anything else that would intrude on the solar. or anything else that would intrude on the solar panels of that building. So we used that as a pilot just for the study and we asked them to study it based on just offsetting the addition scope. So looking to say, how much electricity would be needed to offset the addition only? So they came up with this system. It's again a 50 kilowatt hours, 50 kilowatt system. It's a PV system. The initial cost would be approximately $120,000. A comment incentives right now are approximately $10,000. There would be money available through the Inflation Reduction Act with the payment of about $36,000. So the initial cost, we believe for that system will be approximately $74,000. Again, you can see some of the numbers on the kilowatt hour offsets, how much CO2 reduction, the simple payback period approximately 7.6 years, and the 25-year cumulative positive cash flow is $147,000. So again, there's a lot of things that go into solar and we want to make sure that we're looking at it comprehensively because some things that come into play are roofs, right? That we need to make sure that it's on a new roof. If there's any roof leaks that ever occur, you have to possibly pull the panels and put them re-on. So there's some maintenance costs that you may not really know. Again, they carried some of those costs in the analysis going forward. The lifespan of the system is approximately 25 years to 30 years. That's kind of what the rating is for the system. It could get more, but then we're getting to a point where we might have to be replacing a roof. So there's some things that tie together that make PV a little bit more difficult when you put them up on roofs. Again, the upgrade, the output degradation is about 0.5% a year, so it's not that much, right? The system isn't really losing a ton of productivity on an annual basis. It is losing a little bit on a year-over-year basis just because of age and degradation of the system. Again, the panels do have a 30-year production warranty. I do need to get more information on that, on how it's prorated and what amount it goes down to because again, it's going to have a curve that's only be prorated to a certain amount. And then again, as you can see from the small chart to the left, it's by month. So you can see on the farthest column to the right what the total offset of the building is. So that's taking a look at the whole building, including the addition. How much electricity is that going to offset in January? Because we live in northern climate, it's only going to be about 5%. But once we get into June and July, it could be up to close to 30, 29%, right around 30% of the total building capacity, even with this smaller, again, 50 kilowatt hour system. So again, this is preliminary information. We are, to be honest, we are making our roofs solar-ready and all that really means is we're going to have a route for a conduit to go up to the roof and have a kind of an open location on our electrical walls where panels and that could be put in the future in the electrical rooms. So we are incorporating that because it's practically no cost at this point to do that. So again, all it is is really having a conduit portal up to the roof for a lot of these locations. So we're not having to drill through our roof in the future if these two start going forward. So again, a low-cost, practically no-cost thing that we would be doing regardless of we're going to be choosing to go forward with solar right now or not, just getting the roofs ready, that's pretty common. And again, our roofs, we believe, these solar panel racks, as you can see over here, these are pretty typical. We did go see one in Arlington Heights recently. It was a very similar installation. Their, the panels are put on these racks that are racked at about 10 degrees angle to the south. So the panel sits at about 10 degrees. They are weighted down by concrete blocks and you can see the conduit run is tied to one of those blocks. And again, they run over to the inverters and then the inverters feed into the electrical panel inside the building. So again, it's a fairly simple installation, but there are some things that you need to take into consideration with your roof, in particular with our rooftop installations. So again, just want to put that out there. Again, we're going to explore this more and see if we want to work this into a pilot or explore more wider scale in the future. But again, just want to put some general preliminary information out there, just a small pilot for one facility. Again, here's some of the pros and cons that I put through. I'm not going to go through all of them. Again, the pros are that it's clean renewable energy, it offsets some of our electrical costs, they can be easily save the school some money. And then the cons to the right are mostly the initial upfront costs are, can be significant, and then the maintenance costs that come associated with it for the panels and the roof system. And finally, just in general, just a general update with stormwater. The, again, I want to point out the picture just for reference. This is Windsor that we completed several years ago. This is where the underground stormwater facility was placed for that facility. So we're looking at doing that at three facilities, Patton, Westgate, and Dryden. So there's similar structures that will need to be put in for those three schools. Dryden, we were looking at doing a joint project with the village that they are looking to do some expansion work at that area for the neighborhood. Right now, we don't believe that we're going to be able to team up with them just because of engineering constraints, that the way we need to convey water down to that facility won't work. We potentially could be putting our building at risk by flooding backwards, just on elevation and grade changes within the neighborhood. We'll keep working with the village to see if there's any changes of that design, but right now, it does not appear that it's feasible due to the location of where the village facility will be going in. So that facility, we're going to be looking to put a lower-cost underground system in because it'll be out in the grass areas and it's not as big as the Windsor facility. So these are like, they're plastic arch tubes that'll be going under the plain field, they'll be flat area. So they'll be underground water storage under the grass area at Dryden. Greenbrier, we believe we have enough capacity. Olive, we believe we have enough capacity based on the past construction. Patton, we believe we'll have to put a larger facility in, similar to the Windsor one, due to the grading of the site and the lack of capacity that we have currently. And there's no other place in the village to convey it. So really, the village and MWRD require you to keep it on your site unless there's a regional facility that you can convey it to. So that's like a big village facility that you would need to convey your water to, that it would need to go directly tributary, and we don't have that there. And then Westgate, we still do have the option that we're working through with the Park District and the village that there's a potential that we can convey our water to the Wilkie Curcho Basin. So that is essentially the turf fields and the driving range in that area in the village where we would have to excavate a portion of that basin out to make up the need for our facility. But our water currently does go to that facility and we do have volume already permitted from 1977. So we have about two acre feet of permitted volume in that space. We may need an additional one acre foot or so in that facility. And again, just to put that in perspective, in the grand scheme of that basin, it is relatively very, 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 very small. So we're looking to do that yet, that possibly be a cost savings. There's a lot of hurdles we would need to get through with that from working with the Park District, I'm potentially working through an intergovernmental agreement, getting village approval on the stormwater because they are again, permittee on the basin, and then also getting MWRD approval, which is the regional organization that oversees stormwater in the Chicagoland area. So MWRD would play a major part into that consideration. Those are all the formal presentations that I have for the kindergarten and construction updates. I am open to questions.
Madam President?
Yes, Rich.
Ryan, thanks for a great update. Can you just top, jump over to slide 11?
Yes.
So I'm glad we're looking at solar studies. I know you and I had a conversation a while back about looking at this, so I do appreciate you guys looking at this. I guess the question is, with the amount of rooftops that we're replacing in the next two, three years, how soon, you know, would you be looking to do a POC on this to say, yep, you know, the costs are there, you know, those types of things before we can say, hey, you know what, we're doing the, you know, three-quarters of the roof at Patton, we should do this, or something similar?
Yeah, I mean, I think you want to get it on with the first five years, right? So we would need to kind of make that decision on moving forward with that and putting that all together as a bigger scope if the board would like us to explore that further. You do want to get it on sooner than later on a roof system, right? Because the roof's in great condition, you don't need to do any touch-up or repair. So we would want to be looking at that bigger scale. We do have some ideas on where we would look at each of the facilities. We do have really good maps on where our newer roofs are and things like that, but we would again, need to be moving on that fairly quickly if we would want to consider that further.
When would you be ready to come back and talk about this?
I think it would take us a couple months, but I think in the, you know, late winter, we could probably have something larger scale put together on a building-by-building basis that would kind of have a bigger analysis on that.
So one of the things, I don't know if they'd even offer this, but in some of the commercial properties, retail, commercial properties, you know, your old malls and things, or mini-malls, things of that nature, there are companies out there that are leasing the roof portions to put, you know, and they're carrying the cost of replacing the roof, putting on the solar panels, and you know, they fund the thing back because they're taking the ride, the gap.
Yep.
I don't know if you guys have explored that or that's even an opportunity.
Yeah, so there's a little less options with us with being a public entity. We haven't seen it where they'll come in and do the roof replacements or anything like that. There obviously is the possibility of leasing your electricity back, but you're still going to pay a rate, right? So that's a little bit different than a commercial entity where their financials are a little bit different than ours. But it is something we can consider. It's not a very strong indication that it would be viable for our district, but it is something we can look at and provide more information on.
I don't even know, like I said, I don't know if the, you know, across nine buildings, the square footage is probably massive, but I'm sure we have, you know, this, that, and the other things that make it a little bit more challenging, you know?
Yeah, exactly. Trees and different, different roof elevations, right? So if there's a 10-foot roof on the south side, it blocks views. So there's a lot of shading things that come into play, penetrations, roof equipment, there's a, there are a lot of variabilities that start coming in. Again, these additions, there's not going to be much on the roofs. There's not a lot of new equipment that will be up on the roof because it's supported by stuff from the existing building where it's relatively small. So again, these newer additions, we're thinking that there could be some viable roof space that could be going forward.
Okay. Can you go back one more slide, another quick question? When you're looking at the...
Rich, while you're at the solar one, can I jump in real quickly to tag on to a question? Ryan, have there been, I recall talking to a county commissioner, I believe, or at a state level about grants given to organizations like ours. So have you heard of those?
Yeah, so, again, I don't remember the acronym. There is a larger one. What we've seen though is that they fund a very small solar panel, so they'll fund like a one kilowatt hour system that they can do educational, or they pretty much go the whole building, right? So there's no between, there's no like retrofit or in the middle. They either go, and the other thing that they look at more is the community and underprivileged areas and things like that. So those are things that they take into consideration. The disappointing thing on that one is there's no middle around. It's again, a really, really small system for one panel practically or mega. So again, there are some opportunities that we're going to continue to explore. Our consultant's very knowledgeable on those areas and we'll keep asking them on some of those areas that they believe are recommended for us.
Okay, and this was good because I'll be sure that information I got to get it over to Dr. Vine from the Cook County Commissioner. Thank you.
Ryan, can you go to the previous slide on Patton then? Just real quick, it kind of dawned on me when you showed it this graph, but the building expansion as well as this proposed goes right into where the current bike racks are in the, that best, I don't know if you can call it the, you know, the asphalted area that we literally just asphalted not too long ago with the nets and, you know, that type of thing. So as you're going into that, do we have to then offset that even further? Move the playground back even further or?
Right now, we're not anticipating. Actually, Patton has one of the larger per-student areas on asphalt, so we're assuming that, again, it's not relatively that much asphalt that's going to be impacted. It's not as far out as that appears. So there'll be plenty of asphalt space left at that facility. Again, the addition is not going to be touching the classroom addition, will not be on the asphalt at all. So there's no impact where the classroom is. The only impact will be a small little section where the gym would go if this were to go forward. So again, there'd be plenty of asphalt space remaining at that facility.
Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
Ryan, if you go back to slide 11, I'll jump in with a couple solar things. Can you define, when you say positive cash flow, so is that, I know you put the simple payback period, is that after that? Does it include maintenance? What is that?
Yeah, so my interpretation, the way I read the report and the way he described it to us, the positive cash flow would take into account any maintenance costs and that that you would have during that period. Again, we're anticipating that to be very minimal. We expect the equipment to last, the wiring to last, the panels to last, and they're warranted. So again, we're hoping that that maintenance cost will be relatively low. So again, my understanding is that that is the entire positive cash flow after you pay for the system, you have a positive cash flow of $147,000. Again, that's, that's an offset here because we're offsetting electrical costs, so it's not, we're not taking money in. We're never going to be, we're never net positive with this system, right? We're never going to pay back to the grid and comment's not going to send us a check. This is, that's just showing that that system will give us a net positive cash position of $147,000 through the 25 years.
Understood. Thank you.
Exactly.
Okay. And then you also mentioned on that slide that there's a, provides some UV protection for the roof, does that, it might be a moot point because you'd probably replace both at the same time, is there any impact on?
I mean, I think it's anecdotal evidence at this point. I don't think there's, again, it does provide the protection. Is it to say it's going to extend it 10 years? I don't know. I think there is some added protection that it's going to give you. Again, I just don't think there's the data that tells you that you're going to gain an extra 10 years on your roof.
Sure, understood. And then the only thing, just an observation, you noted the carbon savings in the first year, and I thought it worth noting that that would offset driving around the world once, producing 23 million straws or planting 31 to 46 trees, so.
Yeah, it does. I mean, it does. These systems do, they're not a small drop in the bucket. They do have major impacts for the environment and just your overall cash position, so they are an interesting proposition to be looking at right now.
Great. Ryan, so tell me, other than our board meeting here, on the website, our community can follow the, at hashtag D25build, is that right? Is that what the web?
Hashtag Build25.
Build25.
Yes, Build25. And I believe that'll be coming more and more as we move forward through the social media atmospheres, Build25 again. But again, there are updated drawings on the website as well with just some general outlines of what will be going forward. And there's a general timeline up there on the website as well that will continuously kind of keep updated.
And remind me, the, what is the estimated completion date in 2024? Do you have one?
Again, at this point, it's the start of the school year, but it will be sometime in early August of 2024 that we'll be looking to move in. So we'll try to be done in, it may be close, some get close sometimes, but we're anticipating that it'll be early August and then we'll give some period to move in and get the furniture set up and things like that for the school year, so.
Yeah, we know you're working so, so hard. So thank you so much for all this that you're doing. I can't, you know, I can just imagine, like, I'm working on one little room in my, in my home, so you're doing all these, so I can't even imagine. But there are neighboring areas that at the start of this school year, in the northwest suburbs, right, their school wasn't ready. So I think that's on top of mind for us to, we know that you're kind of chugging along here, so thank you so much and that 2024 and kindergarten will be open.
Yeah, just, we're working with, again, we're going to be working with our construction manager. If there's any equipment that we feel needs to be released early, we'll be bringing that forward to you earlier. So there might be, again, different packages and we're going to recommend for equipment that may need to get released earlier. So there's more conversations we had on that.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, Ryan. Next up, we have Dr. Brian K., that's an action item. He's going to talk, we're going to talk about the calendar, correct, Dr. K.? So I need a motion.
Madam President?
For that item.
I moved that the Board of Education approved the 2023 to 20, through 2024 school calendar as presented.
Thank you, Greg. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Chad. Dr. K., welcome.
I don't have any stormwater or solar power to talk about, but I do think Ryan will be interested to know what our starting date will be. And I think he'll be very interested to know in our ending date next school year so he[1607.15] to know in our ending date next school year, so he knows how quickly he can get into continuing on the phases of the construction. So tonight, I'd like to thank you in advance for the opportunity to share the proposed 2023-2024 school calendar with you. The Calendar Committee's main goal is to prepare a school calendar that will meet the needs of our students and our stakeholders. In addition, the Calendar Committee attempts to build as much continuity and cohesiveness with the structure of the school calendar in order to capitalize on student learning. Therefore, the school, the Calendar Committee reflects on the school calendar from the previous year and engages in discussion regarding what has worked well and what may look to change to improve in the future. The District Calendar Committee is comprised of representatives from the PTA Council, the Arlington Teachers Association, and District 25 administrators. This is a collaborative process between the representatives serving on the committee. We consider the requests of each stakeholder group and attempt to build a calendar that meets the needs of Arlington Heights District 25. I would like to take this time to thank the participants who served on the Calendar Committee, including the administrators, Dr. Steve Perkins, Erin Davis, Donna Binghamman, Akemi Sessler, the parent representatives, Nicole Barbieri, Megan Worthington, and the members of the Arlington Teachers Association, Karen Jones, Allison Anderly, new member Greg Stocko, Casey Whitaker, and Alison Berg. The Calendar Committee also seeks to align the school calendar to District 214 as closely as possible for the benefit of our District 25 families who have children in both District 214 and obviously here in 25. So allow me to highlight some of the specifics in the proposed calendars. Teachers and teaching assistants working in District 25 will report to work starting Monday, August 14th, and Tuesday, August 15th for institute days. Following those two institute days, we will have our teaming day on Wednesday, August 16th. That allows our students to begin on Thursday, August 17th. As a reference, District 214 students will begin on Wednesday, August 16th. We are recommending hosting our parent teacher conferences earlier, again, in the school year during the months of October and February. This is a continued belief that having conferences earlier in the school year will allow our teachers to better communicate the needs of their students to the parent community. The Committee continues to support taking non-attendance days in November, the week of Thanksgiving, to allow the community a fall break, which seems to be supported by the staff and parents at this time. Both winter and spring break will align with District 214 to support our community members. The Committee, on behalf of the Department of Student Learning, will hold a School Improvement Day on Monday, January 8th, after winter break, which is also being taken by District 214 and all the feeder districts into 214, where we can collaborate with our surrounding school districts on professional development. A final change recommended by the Committee was to build two emergency days into the calendar year at the end of the school year, and three into the school year on non-attendance days. Other important dates include the strategic placement of institute days and school improvement days to analyze student data and further bolster our staff's professional development to support our students' academic achievement. Drumroll, the last day for students will be a full day of student attendance on Friday, May 31st, and the last day for our staff will be our records day on Monday, June 3rd, assuming no emergency days will be used. As a reference, the last day of attendance for District 214, Friday, May 31st. The calendar design was a collaborative process by many stakeholders and fulfills the requirements that the Illinois State Board of Ed has instituted. I want to once again thank the Calendar Committee for their hard work and their willingness to explore new ideas. Thank you for your time this evening, and I am happy to take any questions at this time.
Thank you, Dr. K. Questions, comments?
Madam President?
Yes, Rich?
Brian, just, you know, I raised this up last year and just, you know, my ongoing concern of taking a week off over Thanksgiving, and then four weeks later, you know, we had two weeks off. So understanding that kids sometimes is disruptive, time away from school, all those wonderful things, where our, you know, our proficiency results are, how can we really, you know, help me better understand that particular component of why that's so important?
I think similar to last year, we asked the Committee to talk to specifically the ATA to see if they were interested in reconsidering, because it's not something we've always done. It was something we tried, attempted, and liked and enjoyed that extra time off. So I think that we continue to see that as a desire of our Committee, and so they continue to recommend having that time off.
I'll just add to that, again, it doesn't change the total number of days kids are in school, it's just when we take those days off.
No, I can, I guess I can appreciate that, and again, maybe I'm asking for the educational impact of it, because again, when kids learn more consecutive days, so here we are, taking a week off, and then coming back, taking a month, so, you know, they take a week off, they're going to have to relearn something, and then we're going to take two weeks off right away. So I'm just questioning the implications, and why would, I can understand from a, being a parent and all those things, hey, great, you know, I'm away that week, I can go see, you know, Suzie, Billy, Bobby, whomever, but the impact to the kids.
So if I'm looking at the calendar, after that Thanksgiving break, there's one, two, three, four weeks.
Right, no, that's not coincidental. At the time, you don't have consecutive days, you really expect every five, you're going to come back in a month, and you're away for two, so.
And I think exactly what you're saying, Rich, right, otherwise, that Thanksgiving week, we're off Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, right, along with the high school, that Thanksgiving week districts are closed, Thanksgiving Day, the day before, the day after, which is our other calendar experiences we've had. So if we aligned just with the high school, we'd still be off Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and we'd have a two-day week. And so I think the Committee also talked about, you know, good to have that time and better instructionally, let's just take that whole week and put in full week, full five-day weeks later in the calendar.
Dr. K., help me understand, if community members had input about the calendar, who would they, is it the same, they come to the board, we send them over to Dr. Byan? What's a good way to get input on the calendar?
Yeah, anybody that has reached out to Dr. Byan, she always brings it to me, then I bring it to the Committee. We always invite, as our first parent reps, the PTA Council representatives. So they're on behalf of all of the PTAs of all the schools, they're the leaders of all the PTA presidents, so we believe they have probably the best input from a district perspective of the parents, since they meet with them once a month.
Yep.
And they graciously, every year, have volunteered to participate as the PTA Council presidents on this Committee.
But in general, anybody that has a concern about the district-wide calendar, you can have them connect with me.
Yeah, okay, no, that's great. And then historically, has this December break, has that shifted around? Is it closer to, is it closer to Christmas this time, or is it historically always been kind of like this?
If, we just want to talk historically, we always look at what District 214 is doing, and then we copy it for this community. I have never tried to match the beginning and the end date, that's been a desire personally, but it's never been a desire the Committee's had. So the winter break and spring break, with no exception, we try and copy. This was the, I think, the current year we're living, was the most controversial because of the extra day on Friday, the 23rd. We had talked on and off about, do we want to match perfectly? Do we want to take that extra day off like District 214 has? And in the end, we said, we advertise, we match those two breaks, let's continue to take and match and take that extra Friday off.
Okay. And thanks to the Committee, you know, all that engagement, that, the community input, and Dr. K., thank you so much for bringing this to the Board, you know, because we wait for District 214 to kind of go through their calendar process, and then we match it, and so ours happens a little bit later than District 214, correct? So thanks for bringing it today so that families who are planning vacations, who are way more organized than I am, planning vacations 2024, have that information readily available.
And I, no, I told Dr. Byan this as well, I'm aware they have the next year already out, but as you guys know, there's a lot of things that may impact the start date, such as construction, so I don't know if I'm ready to reconvene the Committee to build the calendar another year out, even though I know District 214 already has it printed.
Yes.
So it is something we could consider. I think this is already aggressive in looking at all of the phased construction projects we have, but I think this gives the team a running start to begin after May 31st to get the wrapped-up construction needed before that 24-25 school year begins.
Yeah, definitely. This year, 2024, we don't want to make Ryan nervous, so definitely not for this year or, but may, maybe in future years.
He's up for the challenge.
Yes, yes, he's up for the challenge. Thank you so much, Dr. K., we appreciate the Committee and your hard work on this. We, and if there's no other questions, Lana, any more questions, comments? We're good. Lana, if you could please help us call the vote.
Member Jogi?
Yes.
Member Scopelato?
Yes.
Member Conley?
Yes.
Member Olonechak?
No.
Member Sherniglia?
Yes.
Thank you so much, Lana. Okay, we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Byan?
Thank you. First item is the Freedom of Information Act report, and the Board can see, we've had three FOIA requests since we last met, and each of those have been responded to.
Thank you. And then, Dr. Byan, next, we will talk about the new board member handbook review.
Thank you. So we're giving the Board a draft handbook that we would ask you for some input on when you have a chance. I know you've all looked at it at some level at this point, but if you go back through, we'd be interested in your input. Board policy, board member development, does include a section on new board member orientation, and the steps that the Board agrees to go through to orient anybody who joins the Board of Education. In addition to that policy, in the past, we've typically invited new board members to a meeting with the superintendent, the board president, or their mentor, and our four assistant supes, at which time the assistant superintendents review in more detail each of their department areas to, again, to begin to familiarize new board members with what goes on at the operational level. Some board members approached us, asked us to look at this process for the future, and so Lana, I have to give her the kudos, really has been working very hard, it's been a large, long-term project. She's been pulling together many, many resources to get to this draft, comprehensive new board member manual that is in front of you for your consideration. As we continue to refine this, again, if you, there are areas that you feel we should add to or edit, please send those suggestions to Lana. In a typical timeline, right, we'd want a new member orientation manual ready for the board reorganization, typically April or May, every couple of years, but as the Board knows, sometimes we get new members who are appointed off of that calendar, so we definitely want to have this manual ready for April, May of 2023, all these years we've been talking about, I got to keep track of what year we're in now, but then it would be one that we would like to have ready for any future need as well. So in addition to a draft manual, we've included the policies and the exhibit related to that policy, also kind of an outline of what the typical process is that we've been taking to orient new board members, and then again, a draft of a new school board member handbook, and a shout-out to Bloomingdale School District 13, which gave us their template, which we really use as a jumping-off point. But then again, Lana used numerous, numerous resources from IASB, from National School Board publications, and from other districts to compile all that and put together a handbook that we feel addresses the specific needs of District 25. So happy to hear any input or thoughts now, but otherwise, again, over the next couple of months, if, as you come up with things that you're like, this is something we really should include, send Lana an email, and we'll continue to revise this.
Thank you so much, Lori. Definitely, thank you, Lana, for, it looks beautiful as it is, we'll definitely all look at it even deeper and give any input, but I love the beauty of learning from other districts and District 13, and a school board responsibility, it's each of us know, it, when we first get on this position, there is a lot of learning that goes on, so you helping with this process is so important because it directly impacts our students' and achievement, student achievement, so thank you so much for all the work that you put into that. Any other comments, Rich? Sorry, I feel like I'm going backwards.
No, I just want to echo your thoughts. So Lana, I do appreciate you putting this together, I know you have, you know, one or two responsibilities beyond just helping us here, so we appreciate this, because it does help. You forget about how many small items or small things you have to learn or transition to, or you make the assumptions that, as a parent, you may know how a school operates, and you are completely surprised when it doesn't, it operates differently, meaning a school, a school district operates differently than you may have believed, so, thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
Yeah, I just, I want to add on, I really appreciate the time and energy Lana and Dr. Byan putting into this. You know, the sooner new members, when they join the Board, sooner they become acclimated, the sooner the Board is fully affected, effective, excuse me. But I also want to mention, there's some great details in that outline. I really appreciate the commitment to check-in meetings over time between mentors and the superintendent and new members, and then other things like seating new members near their mentor, the district tour, so a lot of great details, so thank you. And the one small suggestion I would add is, under 4B governance framework, it mentions new members signing. I think that's a great opportunity for all members to recommit and sign at that, at that time.
For the, and Greg- Yeah, the agreements, is that what you were saying?
No, he's the, the board governance framework?
Yes.
Right? When Greg, for example, joined the Board, Greg took that document, reviewed it, and then said, I'd like to sign that I agree with-
Yes.
-what the rest of the Board had already put in place.
Yes.
And so the Board doesn't always review that right on time as new board members-
Yep.
-but that, I think that's a great suggestion, otherwise, again, the Board does do some board development where they revisit-
Yep.
-that framework.
Yep, excellent, and this is going to go hand in hand, you know, as a Board would meet every year, and we're kind of making sure that after an organizational meeting, we meet sooner to make sure that everybody is on the same page going forward, so this all helps with that effective board governance, which is so important, so thank you. Thanks, Lana. Any other questions, comments for that? We will move on. Dr. Byan, if you could tell us about code of conduct?
Thank you. Per the Board's request, we'll share some information about Policy 7240, Conduct Code for Participants in Extracurricular Activities, which the Board passed this September. The policy that press created really catches up to what we've already had in place. Our code of conduct really has not changed significantly in years, and really, when I say our code of conduct, and this will be a question I have of the Board, we don't necessarily have one specific document, but being an elementary school district especially, but a variety of documents that we use to remind our students that when they partake in extracurricular activities, the regular school rules and responsibilities apply. So there are some things spelled out in, for example, Policy 6190, on extracurricular and co-curricular. Again, that shows that, how these activities will be organized, supervised. Policy 7190, student behavior, our parent-student handbook that all parents review and sign that they've reviewed every year at the registration process, and then our two middle schools have taken that student-parent handbook, and as they've seen over the years, some things, bless you, that they feel their students need reminders of, they've kind of created a thing called the, called the ins and outs of middle school, and they highlight some of those behavioral expectations that they feel their students need a reminder of. Of course, IESA, any of our athletic events that are in the IESA program, we also must follow rules and regulations to maintain membership. All of those requirements align with already our behavior expectations for our students. So Thomas had recently created another document that they'd given out to students in their athletic programs, so I've included that as well. But basically, again, this is, anytime we have students in any extracurricular activities, anything school district-sponsored, actually, including field trips, things off-site, we do remind our students that all school rules and expectations apply, and so this is kind of just a compilation of where we get all of that information. You know, there has been a request of maybe creating a separate individual document called Extracurricular Code of Conduct. We could do that if the Board would like us to. Again, it would be basically taking this information, restating it in a separate document or referring to these items as reference in that document. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Madam President?
Yes, Rich?
So Lori, hey, thanks for providing the information. I know you and I have chatted on this particular topic here, just because as part of the policy review, it's good to, to review this and, you know, the small changes. I guess in looking at this, I think, you know, having a specific touch point on extracurricular activities would be important, and, you know, I don't believe it goes to the warrant of creating a separate document, right? I think, you know, as you look at it holistically, though, I do like the Thomases, I'm going to maybe reference it incorrectly, their, their student-athlete participat, because I think it meets the intent of, one of the things that we were talking about here is, where all coaches and sponsors of extracurricular activities shall annually review the code of conduct with participants and provide participants with a copy. So I think that, that particular piece really hones in on what we're trying to get at in this policy, as well as, I think, what I would, what I think, you know, just looking at the handbook and the efforts of this, we talk about things like walking to school, vandalism, you know, personal safety, is even having a section in here called Extracurricular Activities would, I think, meet the intent of what we're looking at here and call out the specific points that we're trying to address in the policy here, because then it truly becomes, hey, you know, parents, constituents, community members, you want to know what, really what we, what we're thinking about, go to the parent handbook, right? And that, that's where you'll find your code of conducts, your what-happens, because you have sections on discipline, you have sections on all sorts of things, where I agree, I think many of those items could be centralized that meet the many different policies that we have on conduct on, because your document here really covers many, not just, you know, one doc, you know, one policy, you're covering many policies with this handbook, and therefore, I think, maybe just highlighting that, especially, we've, we've had good fortune to have great extracurricular, you know, participation with our student bodies, it's growing, you know, that's a wonderful thing, we just, let's make sure we just highlight, you know, our specific expectations that are set forth in policy and our con- that are set forth in policy and are consistent with the framework. Therefore, to your point, I think it's, you know, as we look at it here and Thomas talks about it, there's an expectation of overall, I'll call it just behavior, right? And therefore, it just emphasizes that totality of the behavior and everything that they do. So.
I only had one question really is like, I, so I saw Thomas's, where they're asking for A's. If you get an F, you can't participate in a week. Two D's, it says you can't, you know, there's, but I do know in the overall policies, it's up to the, the coach's decision process. So I feel like, should we be consistent across the middle schools from a participation perspective? Because I think it's great that Thomas is doing that because the expectation of a student athlete is that you are going to be student first and athletic second, right? That's technically the whole idea. But like, South doesn't have that. So is that something that we should be, from a consistency perspective, saying, hey, South, you should have the same concept? Or, I get it, we're leaving it up to the individual coaches, but I see that every team that's, Thomas is listed, South doesn't have that. Is that really, I just want to make sure that we're consistent, that's all.
No, good points brought up by my colleagues. And as I look through the student handbook, you know, extracurricular activities is mentioned, throughout the document, it's mentioned six times. And then there's a section, if you could explain it, the in local parentess section on page 35, that talks specifically about the extracurricular programs at the end. I believe it, it does mention it there. So I'm wondering, we talk about, is it helpful to have more than that? Is that what we're mentioning?
So I think, again, the section I think you're referencing says, "By Illinois law, teachers, certificated educational employees and other persons providing related services to a student may stand in the relation of parent guardian to the student when the student is in school or on school grounds. In addition, those employees may act in that same capacity with respect to any activity connected with the school program." I think that's the part that you're referencing. You're right, it also includes later, this relationship shall extend to all activities connected with the school program, including all athletic and extracurricular programs, and maybe exercise at any time for the safety and supervision of the pupils in the absence of their parents and guardians. So that's something we could, you know, also reference that. And so an example of that, right, is a, a teacher or a coach or a principal who would review expectations with students during the school day and would, could, are responsible for doing that same in extracurricular activities. But I think we could combine, again, all the pieces in here that relate directly to extracurricular and highlight that in, in here as well as in some kind of form that goes home. And, you know, we're giving you examples of middle school, but this policy would apply early childhood through eighth, everything, right? That is school-sponsored in any way, clubs, athletics, dances, evening performances, all of those kinds of things.
Now, the, in the olden days, now remind me again, parents don't sign off on this before the school year starts now anymore, correct?
For this handbook, yes, they do. They do it, well, so in theory, every parent, when they register their student online, they check that they clicked the link to the student handbook and reviewed that. And they check that they reviewed and understand that handbook.
Okay. There are interesting points about the consistency between Thomas and South and having, having the information in both places. So that, those are good points. Thank you.
Lori, just a question on that because, you know, I like where that conversation was going. But it is something to think about is, and if it needs to be called out, is we talk about when you're a student, when you're a, in, in an extracurricular activity, but what if you're a spectator, right? Because you're not necessarily, you're, yes, you're on school ground, but you're not a student technically at that time. You're not a participant of that extracurricular activity. You're not going to or away from school in the progress, you know. Is that a gray area or should that be looked at here? And, you know, I'm not, not looking to have a drawn out discussion, but just, you know, a thought on that.
We can always include a reference, but yes, if you are at, if you are a student in our district and a spectator at a district-sponsored event, you are required to follow school rules.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, moving on. Thank you, thank you for that discussion. We have our second community input. And in order to speak at the second community input, you have to fill out a blue sheet and provide it to Lana. Lana, do we have any? Okay, thank you. With. We have Melissa, thank you, Melissa.
Melissa Care speaking. Who uses RAND School? Who uses RAND School?
RAND School is leased out to the Chicago Flutobukai School, and we have some maintenance storage there.
And what are their test results like?
Thanks for that question, Melissa.
Also, about the stormwater projects, please make sure you don't give away the topsoil, the valuable topsoil. And I noticed this last summer, in some of the dumpsters, I saw gently-used items being thrown out. There are a lot of resale shops in Arlington Heights, like Restore, Goodwill, Salvation Army and others, that might be able to use some of that gently-used merchandise.
Thank you, Melissa. Okay. We, Dr. Vine, if you could help us go through the future agenda item topics with dates to be determined?
Yes, so already scheduled. Library policy and library, I guess, policy is, is on for the January 10th board meeting. I was stumbling because I wanted to let the full board know the policy committee that met this evening has more work to complete. So we're going to schedule an additional policy meeting prior to that January 10th meeting. The library policy is related to that work, but the policy committee, of course, would like us to go ahead and continue with that library policy conversation with the full board on that same evening. So we'll be prepared to do that. Also, we scheduled the request to talk about the future of summer U funding. As a reminder, we used ESER fundings for the last couple of years to pay for many of those courses. And the board expressed an interest in talking about how families would pay for summer U moving forward. And then we don't have a date yet because we have to wait till we know what the amount is. But we would always bring to the board, or would bring to the board somewhere between January and March because it has to be done by April. The opportunity for that recapture levy abatement. As a reminder, the board automatically recaptures that levy abatement unless you take action not to each year. We don't, we wait, is it the county assessor that gives us that amount?
County treasurer, the law says they have to issue it to us by November 15th.
Oh, oh, but we don't have it yet, right? Okay. So as soon as we have, as soon as we have it, we will then let you know. And we could put it on the agenda if the board would like to.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Vine.
Madam President?
Did you go, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Greg.
I just wanted to jump in and on the summer U funding, which you mentioned, Dr. Vine, you said, you know, that the topic was related to the expiration of those ESER funds and particularly related academic review. And I, I had brought this up when we were talking about that earlier this year. And I thought maybe I could front load a few questions that I would be interested in. And I'm sharing them here, I'm happy to forward them to you. But in case this brings up other questions now. So I'd be interested in learning, to what extent did the enrollment increase in academic review when offered as a no-cost program to families? Interested in knowing if we could quantify the ROI on the offering in terms of student achievement? With the approximate cost of 30K, 30,000, if we could explain the potential impact on other programs or offerings with this addition to the budget or, and/or to the budget long-term? And then finally, are there any reasonable offsets that you would recommend, either partial or complete, if we consider adding this to the budget?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Rich?
Greg's questions did spark something maybe to think through. But I think I realize, or understand where his line of questioning is. Again, just worth exploring if we're going to be talking about this. Today, we have a set number of type of services, right, that we offer within that summer U program. But what if we offered it beyond just the traditional services? And I'm thinking music, I'm offering a music program or offering this, the music for youth, the string, you know, the violins, the orchestra-type things, programs as a summer program as well. You're again, looking at the enrichment of a total student, you know, students learn in multiple ways, maybe there's a way to, you know, take a look at that outside of this purely, you know, purely traditional academic type of work.
And I'm sorry, just for clarification, are you talking about in terms of, talking about if the district were to fund that as opposed to, right, families now, right now can pay for other enrichment activities as well as a summer band program? You're talking about, what would it, bringing the board some information about what if the board covered those costs?
Yep, to make it even more extensive, things of that nature.
Okay, thank you, Rich. So as far, we're going to, as far as new topics, do we have new topics?
Madam President?
Other than, yes, Rich?
Other than?
Oh, no, go ahead, other than what we've already been talking about.
I did email the board members just, I know back in, earlier, or two months ago, we had the Illinois School Report Card. Last, last month, we had the Ezra Committee, or, I'm sorry, the Ezra Consultants, right? Ekra, thank you, Ekra, Ezra.
I like how you renamed them. New branding for Ekra.
Everyone understands the intent of what I'm trying to go for, so I appreciate that. So the Ekra Consultants have come out and given us a view. And in some cases, we, we touched on certain components and we've heard some community input. So I think it would be important for us to just have a conversation around two components, really, you know, how is our proficiency going over time? Which is Ekra had pointed out, you know, it, it appears that, and they admitted, not admitted, but they concur, that our proficiency level is declining, as well as then discussing our proficiency level of that 49% based on IAR. And just from a board perspective, a governance standpoint, do we have the sufficient goals and things in place to help improve that as compared to maybe other districts? Maybe we need to add some added effort in that or some further alignment to where it is at this point.
Okay, thank you, Rich, for that suggestion.
I'm sure there's a short one sentence.
To, to sum it all up.
Put that, yeah, put that on the agenda.
Yeah, Greg?
Madam President, I have a suggestion, but I want to suggest something related to what Rich said, is just that, you know, we just talked about that topic last month. And we should, if history proves, we should have a update in February?
A spring.
Oh, okay. I was going to say, if it, if that was coming soon enough, it might be well served to line up with that to save, be efficient in our time. But that's all. My suggestion or, and, well, I'll preface by saying, on November 29th, I attended a ruler parent meeting, which I'd seen other ruler presentations as a board member. But this was different in that I was at Patton and it really integrated the teacher perspective and seeing ruler in practice. And really was invaluable in gaining an understanding of what it looks like every day in our district, not just as a whole, like what is the program, though that was included. So I would like to express an interest, unless you already have it planned, of seeing something along that lines here at a board meeting. Just because, again, it was seeing it in practice and from the people that are implementing this daily, it was a great presentation.
Okay, thanks for that suggestion. So thanks for those two suggestions. I want to branch it out to my colleagues to make sure that we kind of have the collective will of the board to go, to put those on new topic agenda. So for student achievement, are we, do we think that we should go forward with that piece and have that conversation?
Can I just ask for the board, right, if we, if you want to have a more in-depth conversation about assessment, that you may want to consider a special meeting committee of the whole, right? If you want to have some conversation beyond what we're presenting in the fall and in the spring and what questions or ideas you were able to share during those meetings, I would think the board may want to then schedule a special meeting with a longer length of time if talking about those during board meetings isn't meeting your need to get your thoughts.
So I heard two suggestions. One, to kind of tie it in and wait till when we were going to discuss it or put on a closed session, oh, sorry, a special meeting.
And for, in terms of the timing of when we will discuss it, we would do a spring assessment report and a fall assessment report. So I wouldn't necessarily say February.
Yeah.
I'd probably say we're looking April, May, honestly.
Personally, I'd like the idea of a more special session in line with the, it doesn't need to be special-special, but just, just aligned with the, with the assessment.
So in the spring, but do the spring report and this.
Right, because I think it goes together as a, as a good topic.
Okay, I'd like, I'd like to hear from Chad and Brian. Do you agree with that? I just want to be sure we're moving forward with the collective will of the board.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I think it would make sense to put this as a, you know, longer discussion because I think if we try to allot ourselves 30 minutes to talk to it, we end up having Rich ask all the questions and then we have to deal with that. No, it's okay. At that hurt.
I would think if, you know, based upon your input and the input of the administrative staff, not necessarily have a committee of the whole meeting on that topic, but maybe have two board meetings that month because we know, you know, this agenda items, something like that is more what I'm thinking personally. But if, if it warrants a committee of the whole meeting for just that topic, I don't know. Just my.
Or you can create some options for you to consider.
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Vine. If you kind of think through it at the backend and let us know what, what makes sense. And then that second topic, ruler topic that Greg suggested, are we good, any thoughts on that? Should we move forward with that?
I would like.
I think that should be a no.
Becky's input on that before I, I answer.
Okay.
Just kind of what her thoughts would be on the natural progression or the natural flow of curriculum updates, right? You know, we've already went through ruler as we evaluated it before we made the purchase. And we don't look at any other curriculum. So I just, I kind of wanted like her thoughts on what would a curriculum update really look like? And what's her regular cadence of, of presenting things before I just say, yeah, let's, you know, let's add a ruler topic. Not to, not to negate what you're saying, I, I kind of agree, I'd like to see more, but.
Yeah, it's an important topic, but check in with Becky. Chad, were you going to say something?
I was going to say, I think having the ruler presentation, maybe that's an opportunity, like you having Becky, but I'm assuming Becky approves everything that gets presented to the, to the parents. So I would assume that from my perspective would make sense. Maybe that's an opportunity to present it. I don't know how long it was, but is there an opportunity to give that broader conversation there? So that, you know, because not everybody has a chance to attend it and you're seeing it being presented maybe different ways within the schools, but it'd be good to have Becky kind of present maybe what that was presented and then how that, you know, how that was received. Because it sounds like you received it well. And I feel like having it available for all of us to see, and then maybe even too, it's available on the website, I don't know, just something for that, other ways for people to see it. Because I think there's a lot of opportunity to go see these things, but I'm not necessarily sure that everybody always has the time.
I just want to clarify my suggestion, you know, really throwing it to Dr. Vine on the how and when and so.
Thank you. No, those are both good suggestions and it's, it's good to hear from all colleagues. And so what I was hearing, Dr. Vine, is if you kind of go back to our admin team and see what makes sense, and we feel both of those are important, but just kind of the timing of those and how, the how of it.
And we can get back to you again when we talk about pre-for-agenda topics. Our process then would be to add them there and give you dates and correlate it to that.
Thank you, Dr. Vine. So before I close this meeting, and since it is the last meeting of 2022, I really want to take this opportunity to thank our community for all of you who attend and attend our meetings, all of you who watch our meetings, all the preparation. So our community, I want to thank our community members, our admin for all the hard work they put into one single board meeting, a lot of work goes into it. So the admin, the staff, the teachers, everybody in this district, not just for the board meetings, but everything that has happened in 2022. It's been a great year. We have to say it's been different, right? And hopefully better. been different, right? And hopefully better than what, what we've gone through as a community. And I truly want to thank my colleagues for the amount of dedication they show, the hard work that they're always putting forward, the time away from family, and then waking up the next morning, sometimes super tired, when you're trying to get days working as well. So thank you to my colleagues, and a huge thanks to Dr. Vine for everything that you do.
Thank you.
And now, I need a motion to adjourn, so we can go back into closed session to continue our discussions.
Madam President?
Yes, Rich?
I'm that we adjourned open session to move back into closed session.
Thank you, Rich. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Chad. And Lana, if you could please call the, vote for that too.
Member Scapalotto?
Yes.
Member Conley?
Yes.
Member Olonechak?
Yes.
Member Shniglia?
Yes.
Member Jogi?
Yes. Thank you, everybody. Good night.